I call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to gather, to order tonight. Our first procedure will be our prayer by Mr. Hudson and then the pledge by Mr. Cotton. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you would, bow with me as is your custom. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the things you've given us. We thank you for allowing us to come here in freedom to conduct the business of this county. And Lord, as we come to you, our hearts are troubled with all the things that are happening in our world and in our nation. And Lord, we, your people, who are called by your name, do humble ourselves now before you, and we seek your face, and we ask you to please heal our land, help us to get along with each other, and to conduct business in a way that you would have us conduct business for the benefit of the people of this land, who is in Christ Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Let us rise for the pledge.
To the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask you all if you have not already turned your cellphones off, to please do so, or put them on vibrate at this time. We welcome our electeds. I know Pam Thomas is here, many of our electeds, so it's always great to have you join us. The Board affords the public two opportunities to speak, called "public comments." The first is a three-minute opportunity, and it must be related to an item on the agenda tonight. When you wish to speak, you need to sign up in the back, and please indicate which agenda item you will be referencing. The second is a five-minute period, and you can speak on any subject that the Board has authority over. This will come at the end of the meeting. We ask that you come forward, and if the clerk does not have your name and address correctly, please indicate to them the correct address and name. Make your comments to the Board in its entirety. No public input is permitted. We ask that you not endorse a candidate or a business during your comment. The Board will reserve the right to address any concerns or questions that you bring up in your comments at Commissioner's comments. There will be no one-on-one response during your comment period. At this time, I'm going to ask to amend the agenda. I'm going to ask to pull Item 7E off of the agenda. That is the item for appointments to the hospital board. I've had some concerns raised to me, and we have ample opportunity to go back and put this on a future agenda, but at this time, I'd like a motion, or a second to my motion, to pull 7E. So, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Strike Item 7E from your agenda. Is there any comments on the consent agenda, or can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
No move.
A second on the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Hudson, this brings us to our first public comment, the comment section where you have to address according to an agenda item. Do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Madam Chair. The first public comment period this evening has a three-minute time limit. In accordance with the Board's Rules of Procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner's comment period at the end of the agenda. All comments must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda item on for this meeting during this first public comment session. The first individual that signed up actually has their name stricken, Wilma F., or Wilma L. Futral. I just want to make sure that, in fact, Ms. Futral did strike her own name.
Yes, sir, I'll sign on the five-minute period.
Thank you, Ms. Futral. The next person that signed up to speak is Mr. Mark Price of 231 Xander Drive, Jacksonville. He is speaking regarding Item 6A. Mr. Price, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Three minutes.
My apologies, three minutes. I just read that, didn't I? Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Board, first of all, for reconsideration of this item and placing it on the agenda. It's an item which was much discussed in the previous primary campaign, and it was also something of concern that had been addressed a couple of months ago at a Board meeting as well. And I just want to speak in support of the resolution. I feel like it's modeled pretty much after the same resolution that was passed by the GOP in March back in the county convention. I feel like with a growing county and expanding population, this offers opportunities for greater representation, and also as well with staggered terms, the ability to, the voters to hold the elected representatives accountable, with elections every two years for Commissioners. And so with three being elected on a two-year cycle, then four, I see that as an advantage for the public in keeping them aware and allowing them to provide feedback for the Board. So, I see it as a positive, and ultimately, it's up to the people to decide. And so, yeah, I see that as a positive thing, and I would encourage you to support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. May I recommend to the audience, when you come forward to address an agenda item, the listening public may not know or have an agenda, so if you could, in your opening comments, just refer to what the topic is also. Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next individual that signed up to speak is Mr. Al Burgess, PO Box 100, Jacksonville, speaking in regards to Item 6A. Mr. Burgess, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Aye.
Board of Commissioners. I'm here to speak on Item 6A, on the agenda. In October of 2016 and April 2015, I came before the Board regarding the subject of Board expansion, districting, and staggered terms. I will be the first to admit that I'm happy that the Board is working hard to address these issues, however, I'm disappointed by the fact that the resolution contains no mention of districting. Many citizens are in favor of districting Onslow County, therefore, as a member of Action PAC, I think the option of districting should be included in the referendum. For if the manner in which we elect Commissioners is going to be decided by the electorate, we should ensure that the referendum item is reflected of the needs and interests, of their needs and interests. The county currently uses an antiquated at-large voting system that fails to effectively provide the citizens with Commissioners that are more representative of their needs and interests. A district voting system will provide the citizens with a Board that is more representative of their constituents. Within the Board of Commissioners Resolution 16-007, it states that the Board desires to enhance the county's representation. And what better way for the Board to enhance our county's representation than to move past our current at-large voting system and move to a districting, move to districting our county? Districting our county will allow our county to have a Board that is more proportionally representative of the needs and interests of the cities, townships, and communities that make up Onslow County. And staggered terms will give us the assurance that there will be no disruption in the planning, coordinating, or implementing of county policy, and doing it will always be guaranteed that our county would have a proper turnover and succession plan regardless of who is elected to any of the offices, which are representational safeguards that our current at-large voting scheme doesn't offer. I respectfully request the Board to consider, and the community to support, moving past our at-large voting system and moving to a hybrid system with five district members, two at-large members, staggered terms, and four years is more than enough time to map districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual signed up to speak is Mr. Dan Whitten of 205 Patrick Allen Lane, Jacksonville, also speaking in regards to Item 6A. Mr. Whitten, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. This is in regards to Item 6A, Resolution 16007. I'll try and be brief. First of all, I was in the Bay Shore area a lot the past few weeks, and I'm looking at the new Health Services Building. I want to thank you guys for your leadership on that. It looks fantastic. I hope it stays fantastic. So, thank you all for that, yeah. I'm hitting the ground running for the past year, and I would like to see, I would echo my colleagues here, I would like to see someone from Sneets Ferry to stay on the Board, someone from North Toppsil, from Verona, from Richlands, and Holly Ridge. I think that we definitely need to have more seats. We are growing, that's a repeated point, but I think that we should take that conversation a tad bit further and have an inclusive representation on the Board. We need to increase civic engagement, and that's done by the most, most people do not like politics, don't vote, and can't stand politics. And I do know, as one of those people who used to be, I raised my hand, we want to be able to reach out and to talk with our representative leaders, whether it's local or state level. So, I really ask that you guys consider that, taking that a tad bit further and work a tad bit harder, and I'll do whatever I can to help out, I'm not sure what to do, but you holler at me and I'll help you out with it, but let's make some districts and have someone, have all, all areas of the county at the table of the conversation. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Ms. Dawn Rochelle of 224 High Hill Road, Jacksonville. Ms. Rochelle is speaking in regards to Agenda Item 4, North Carolina Youth Connected Project Survey Results. Ms. Rochelle, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners tonight. I am speaking as the Executive Director for the Onslow County Partnership for Children as well as a private citizen, and wanted to set the stage because I've had many questions regarding North Carolina's, the North Carolina Youth Connected Project and healthy youth of Onslow. As the convener of the group, when we were first approached by then the Adolescent Prevention, Pregnancy Prevention Coalition of North Carolina back in 2013, they came to us with data that we already knew, that we had an issue in our community that was systemic and is something that the Partnership for Children has spent a little over $3 million since our inception in trying to provide supportive services to teens. And when this group approached us at the recommendation of other state agencies because of our work in the community with the Child Advocacy Center and other programs where we have leveraged resources in our community, we felt like that it was a good fit to go forward with public individuals and multiple meetings to decide as a community whether or not this was funding that we would want to be able to implement in our community. We see North Carolina Youth Connected's project in Onslow County in partnership with Cumberland County as really an opportunity to leverage and coordinate preventative services in our community in a way that we never have. And while I recognize that we all have our own lens of how we look at this issue because of our own life experiences, I'm very appreciative of the Commissioners being willing to hear from the research data and to consider the county being an implementation partner as Onslow County Public Schools has. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Ms. Sue Stelmach of 201 Hogan's Valley Way, Salisbury, North Carolina, who has signed up for Agenda Item 4, North Carolina Youth Connected Project Survey Results. Ms. Stelmach, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed three minutes.
Hello, Commissioners. I am Dr. Suzanne Stelmach-Tolory. I'm a former long-term resident of Onslow County and a lifelong children's advocate. I'm the Medical Director, Charter Member of and continuing medical care provider at Onslow County Partnerships for Children Child Advocacy Center. I'm a former Board Member of the Partnership for Children, and I chaired Community Child Protection Team for 15 years in this community. I'm the Medical Director of the Health Department, and I'm a pediatrician of nearly 40 years' practice. I want to speak to the importance of hearing the information that has been provided for us. We all know that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Pediatric health care heavily emphasizes preventive strategies. We do not need to educate our children on having sex. Media, Internet, and social media are doing a fine job of that, nor would I advocate a program, implementing a program with a curriculum and teaching sex to minor children at school. However, effective pregnancy prevention strategies presented in the setting where children are, which is their schools, and implementing teen-friendly health services, including pregnancy prevention, are two approaches which promise to improve teen health. Both of them can be and need to be offered in the school population inclusively and can be offered together with information on abstinence. The fact that families must agree to have their children participate will ensure that those families' freedom in this matter. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that is the last individual that signed up for the first public comment period.
Very well. Can you take the next three items and present to the Board?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item 4 is a presentation. This is an informational presentation. No action is requested by, of the Board, rather, this evening. The presentation is on North Carolina Youth Connected Project Survey Results. Mr. Jack Clark, Clark Research Associates, will provide the presentation to the Board. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. I appreciate the opportunity, and we're going to get started because we've got a lot of information. So, how the survey was conducted, I want to mention that briefly because it's really important. 401 telephone interviews were conducted with adults 18 to 65 who live in Onslow County. We completed the survey from mid-March to mid-April. We had cellphone, we used cellphone, and we used landline, but 60% of our sample was cellphones. And that really has a lot to do with the fact that a lot of households now only have landlines. In North Carolina, it's 43%, and then you have another 16% who, although they have a landline, primarily communicate with the cellphone, and so on. So, because of that, you know, things have to change, and that's what we do, and it's consistent with some of the other kinds of research organizations like Pew Research, for example, we follow them closely, and if you ever look on their website, we approach it pretty much the same way. The interviews were conducted by AOS Research of Wilmington, North Carolina. The intent of any survey is not to just tell you how 401 people felt, it's really to get a representative sample of the larger population. We're more interested in how the 120,000, over 220,000 adults of that age group, how they feel. So, we're trying to get some good representation. You do that largely by your selection process, and how you go about approaching getting a representative sample should be, have good representation of all different groups. And then as a fine tuning kind of a thing at the end, if you have a particular group, let's say gender group, or age group, or whatever, who is under or overrepresented in the sample, then you await them up or down accordingly to bring them back into their true proportion. So that the results, again, it helps to ensure that the results represent the larger population of interest. This is the first question. I'm going to show you questions and their answers to it in the order they were pretty much asked, okay? So, kind of start in the beginning. We asked them some general concepts. Teaching teenagers about sexual health will help them become healthy adults. Three out of four people, 77%, said they strongly agree with that. 19%, one out of five, said they somewhat agree, and then you have 3% who disagree. Information on how to avoid pregnancy and sexually transmitted disease should be made available to teens. 87% strongly agree. It's, and again, I'm most interested in strongly agreeing, because people who somewhat agree, you know, there may be a but to that. I agree, but, but the folks who strongly agree, they're not likely to change their opinion to disagree. So, I'm always interested, if we had this like 50 or 40% somewhat agreed and 40% strongly agree, that would be a different result for us, okay? So, again, I'm emphasizing the percent who strongly agree. Encouraging teens to abstain from sex is the only thing needed to address the problem of teen pregnancy. As you'll see, 31% strongly agree, I mean, they strongly or somewhat agreed with that. And abstinence, abstaining from sex, and teaching abstinence is an idea that has traction for three out of 10 people. And from their standpoint, they're saying that if you only did that, that would help address the problem. Doesn't mean it conflicts with the fact that they could, they could feel that way, they might say this other program and other things like that would be helpful, but again, abstinence has, has some traction. But you have to also consider that seven out of 10, or 68%, they disagree with that, that that alone is going to address the problem of teen pregnancy. Compared to other counties in North Carolina, teen pregnancy is more of a problem in Onslow County. My understanding is there's some debate about that, as to whether that's true or not, and apparently, there's some debate about that in the public because you've got, if you add the nine and 17%, you've got one out of four people agree to that at some level. You've got another one out of four people who disagree with it. And then you've got about half of the folks don't have an opinion on it, don't know, they have no opinion. Whether it's an issue or not and all that, it's not for me to, as surveyors, it's not for me to resolve here, but if it is an issue, the only thing I would say about this result would be that you've got 75% of the folks who either way, who either don't have an opinion, don't know about the issue, or they have, they, they don't know it's an issue. And so if there was anything going to be done, it may be an issue, there may be a need for some increased awareness. Onslow County, so now we're going to get into more specific ideas. So, in Onslow County, we ask, I'm going to read you a definition of what teen pregnancy prevention programs are. They are defined as educational programs for teens that include sex-appropriate information on abstaining from sex, dealing with peer pressure, and medically accurate information on condoms and birth control. So, now they've had that, that it's a succinct description of what those programs are, and our first question is, really, a pregnancy prevention program should be offered to teens in this county? Agree, disagree, and 82% strongly agreed with it, 12% somewhat agree, 4% disagree. In general, would you prefer teens get A) information on abstinence, or B) medically accurate information on both control, birth control, and condoms? Both A and B, or neither? As you can see, three out of four people said they should have both. One out of six, 16%, said just birth control. 9%, one out of 11, one out of 10, said should be abstinence, and 1% said neither. And the other that says category name there was don't know, I don't know how that came out like that, but. Now, we thought we would approach it a little differently because before we've asked, it had different degrees, I could somewhat agree, I could somewhat disagree, or whatever, we just want to kind of get off the fence. Do you favor or do you oppose it? Do you favor or oppose these things? So, do you favor or oppose offering proven pregnancy prevention programs to teens in this county? 94% favor. I've done a lot of issues polls, and, and there's a lot of things that people will agree with. Is the economy an issue? Yes, they agree with that and stuff. But it's to see percentages like this is that the largest part of your population, the very large segment of your population favors these kinds of things. Out of the box, this is their first presentation. Doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that when the program's being done, the logistics are going to not be difficult, or is, you know, you're not going to run into issues, it's going to be just a piece of cake. No one's saying that, but it's saying their first reaction is, I favor it. 5% or 4% oppose it, and 1%, we don't read this answer choice, but they had the option, they said, well, it depends. Another 1% had no opinion. Do you favor or oppose offering services where teens can talk to a doctor about pregnancy prevention and receive birth control if needed? You'll see that's 87% favorite, but you can see that's, when you, when you introduce these items here, there was about 7% dropped off of that, that first, you know, that they don't favor it quite as much, but they're still 87%, and you have 11% who either oppose or feel like it depends. I add this last slide just to show you on that last result, there is an age difference. Intuitively, I think it's not surprise there's some age difference. We compared the four different age groups, and you can see the 18 to 29-year-olds are like just about, yes, you know, we favor that. And you can see it drops to 82% for the next two age groups, and those who are 50-plus, my age group, I, and I would say I'm well-placed in that age group, or have been for a while, 74%, three out of four, still favorite. So, things are a matter of degree. But again, I think we expected some generational differences, but I just wanted to show you that's not uncommon, a lot of these results. We had some generational differences like that, but it doesn't mean that people were against it. And with that, is there any questions?
Is that allowed now?
It's allowed.
Okay.
Any questions for the presentation? Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, all of you.
Item 5, public hearings. There are two public hearings scheduled during this meeting. During these public hearings, we'll follow the normal format. They'll begin with a staff introduction by Planning and Development Director, Mr. Ben Warren. After his introduction, I will open the public hearing. I'll ask that the applicant or the applicant's representative come forward to make an applicant statement, and then I'll open up to members of the public, first those who have signed up in the back of the room, and then the audience in general. I'll close the public hearing, and then the item will be available for Commissioner discussion and possible action. The first is rezoning case L R E Z 2016-43. Mr. Ben Warren, our Plan and Development Director, will give the staff introduction. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. The first rezoning request that we have for your consideration this evening is the rezoning property from RA, Rural Agricultural, to HB, Highway Business. Just an overview of the property. The current property owner is Spring Hill Road Investors LLC, and the formal identification of the property is parcel identification number 1133-72.1, and it consists of a little over 24 and a half acres. Looking at the environmental concerns, there is no floodplain property, or floodplain areas identified on the property, and there is a small area of managed pine lands located on a portion of the property. Looking at utilities, Anwasa has a 6-inch water line that runs along the opposite side of Spring Hill Road, which is not directly adjacent to the portion of the track that's considered for rezoning, but it is adjacent to the, the opposite side of the parent track, and also a 4-inch water line that runs along the opposite side of US Highway 17 from the front edge of the rezoning site. There is no sewer available or anticipated at this area, and fire service will be provided by the Belgrade Volunteer Fire Department. Now, the current streets providing access to the property would be US 17, which has an average annual daily traffic count of between 8,600 and 10,000 vehicle trips per day. Now, that will change some once the Maizeville Bypass is opened. The, the property currently fronts directly on US 17, but as you'll see in a moment, once the bypass is opened, it will front on, I guess, what will be called the US 17 Business Section. The rear of the parent track also fronts on Spring Hill Road, which has an average annual daily traffic count of 410 vehicle trips per day. And the schools providing service to the site are Silverdale Elementary, Hunters Creek Middle, and Whitehead High School, and all three are considered under capacity. As we take a look at the rezoning site, you can see it's located just on the northeast side of New Bern Highway, and it's probably a mile or so south of the Onslow County-Jones County line. As we zoom in for a zoning vicinity map, there to the, I guess, the northwest of the rezoning site, you can see where the Maizeville Bypass will come into the existing US 17. And as we look at the surrounding zoning, everything is predominantly rural agricultural with some existing subdivisions that are currently zoned R8M, and then farther north, at the Whitehead River Road intersection, we do have a small commercial node there that is currently zoned Highway Business. Just taking a look at the aerial vicinity map of the rezoning site, you can see the majority of the area is existing timberland. Across to the northwest, on the opposite side of New Bern Highway is a large 400 to 500 acre track that's currently owned by Warehouser. There's some additional wooded tracks to the south and to the, the east, and then going back north, we have some existing residential subdivisions. And here is a cutout of the proposed Maizeville Bypass, and as you see, the rezoning site is highlighted in red, so just to the, this is not oriented north and south, but just south of the rezoning site will be where the Maizeville Bypass will tie back into the existing US 17, and you can see there's a, basically a super street concept. It will be the section that will be through this area, the Maizeville be the section that will be through this area, the Mayville bypass. And what the super street is, is basically a concept where you have turnarounds in lieu of traffic signals to control traffic going back north and south in the bypass area. So comparing the two zoning districts, the existing current zoning district is rural agricultural, and this area is predominantly used for maintaining a rural development pattern. As you know, we do have a number of non-residential type uses that are currently allowed in the RA district, not quite as intensive as what you would see in a highway business, and certainly more safeguards and controls on those non-residential uses. A minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet and no maximum density. As opposed to the proposed zoning, the highway business, and it's primarily to accommodate the development of retail, service, and related businesses along major thoroughfares and roadways throughout the county, with no minimum lot size and no maximum density. And if you look at the comprehensive plans, future land use map, now this future land use map was created and put together before the Mayville bypass was underway, even though you do see a reference to it here in the map, that was not something that was necessarily studied for this area in particular at the time the comprehensive plan was created. However, looking at the land use plan for the area at the time that it was created, farther up towards the White Oak River Road, as we saw some of those highway business properties, that is consistent with the land use plan. The area that you see here that is in yellow is a commercial activity center, transitioning to a medium-density residential, and then into the green area, which is an agricultural or forestry area. As we look at the comprehensive plan, the, what we find is though, even though the future land use map was not necessarily studied to incorporate the changes that would be brought forth by the Mayville bypass, as we look at the guiding principles of the land use plan, they are not supportive of the proposed rezoning, as they really support the, and guide the development of commercial nodes themselves. So the, we also look at the zoning ordinance as well, and one thing that we find there for guidance for the highway business is that it's to be situated along major thoroughfares for the traveling public as well. As we look at reasonless and public interest, we'd also, again, look at the surrounding zoning, the surrounding land uses, and as we saw in the vicinity zoning map, there is some highway business farther north at the intersection of White Oak River Road and US Seventeen, forming that commercial node, and in the area of the proposed rezoning is predominantly timberland and existing residential subdivisions. So as we look at the reasonless and the public interest, there again, we would say that the rezoning is not considered reasonable or in light of existing zoning and vicinity uses. The staff recommendation, so based on the guiding principles of the land use plan, and also the guiding principles for the highway business of the zoning ordinance, staff will not recommend approval of the rezoning. However, the planning board also reviewed this rezoning, and based upon the potential for future commercial development at the intersection of the Mayville bypass and the existing Seventeen, the planning board did recommend approval of the rezoning request. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Hudson for the public hearing.
Thank you, Director Warren. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on rezoning case L R E Z two thousand sixteen dash forty-three. There are individuals that have signed up, but first I'll call upon the applicant or the applicant's agent to please come to the podium. You're requested to provide a description of the project and any additional information to the board, other than what Mr. Warren has already covered. When you come, please state your name and your relationship to the applicant.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Tom Rayhill, and I'm owner of Spring Hill Investors LLC.
Good evening, I'm Luke Minus with Stroud Engineering, here with the applicant as his site engineer.
Okay.
I'm going to hand some items out, if you don't mind, to the board. I didn't get anything on the prompter, but it might be helpful if you have any interest in flipping through.
Pass them to the clerk, please.
Ma'am?
You have something to pass out, please give them to the clerk.
What I've got is just a couple of formalized findings of fact, if we need to go through those, we can, and then under that, there's a series of exhibits. Most of those do depict the Mayville bypass, so they're a little bit more helpful than some of the planning documents, and some narration of those, but I will go through my little introduction and happy to answer any questions or go into any of these things in more detail as you see fit. Staff relies heavily on the land use plan as their basis for a recommendation for denial. While the land use plan correctly encourages commercial nodes at major intersections, the major proposed intersection of US Seventeen Business and Bypass is not addressed in the land use plan and supporting drawings. The creation of this new intersection and the effect it will have on traffic patterns in the vicinity of an existing commercial node in Belgrade should be given consideration. Without adequate guidance from the land use plan, this board must consider the merits of a highway-based zoning district for the subject property based on the roadway infrastructure which is in place or under construction. And a few points that I've noted as I've gone through assembling this that I would just like to share. Traffic at the commercial node at the intersection of US Seventeen, which will be the future Business Seventeen, and Belgrade Swansboro Road, which is State Road thirteen thirty-one, will be reduced relative to traffic growth in the area at large. That is to say, that node which is currently identified in the land use plan, as this area grows, that area is somewhat cut off from the rest of the region because of the bypass. So that node, the growth shown there is probably an overestimation. There will be no direct access to Belgrade, including the aforementioned intersection at the commercial node, from the US Seventeen Bypass. Instead, traffic must exit off the US Seventeen Bypass and drive one point three miles past the subject property en route to Belgrade. The bypass serves the traveling public, but it does so to the detriment of the commercial nodes located in Belgrade. The Belgrade node would be better served by uses that are identified in the CB District, which are intended to serve the immediate community. The subject property is seeking a zoning that would allow that property to serve the traveling public, as well as communities of Belgrade, Mayville, and beyond. Another thing I've noted is that staff recognizes the land use policy number forty-eight, the importance of the conservation of the agricultural uses on land that is suitable for such use. This land use policy is at odds with the fact that there are a number of permitted non-agricultural uses in the RA zone. Given the rate of growth in Onslow County, much of which has taken place on land once utilized for agriculture, it is implicit that the agricultural uses are encouraged where demand and infrastructure for other uses do not exist. The proximity of the US Seventeen Business Bypass intersection to the subject property does not diminish its value as an agricultural use, but it does, however, provide an opportunity to utilize it as a commercial use of greater value. The proximity of the US Seventeen Business Bypass intersection to the subject property does, however, diminish the value for residential use, which is one of the things allowed by the RA district. As homes will be less marketable along the busy highway, it is generally accepted that commercial uses can serve as an effective buffer between highways and residential areas. This is done through the structure itself, as well as the required buffers, plantings will be required around it. You get a noise and a visual barrier, and that would make property to our south more desirable, and existing homes' values would be increased because they would have a buffer from the highway, which is going to be a big deal for those folks. And lastly, and this is shown in the last exhibit I've got, and we can get to that later if you care to, but the NCDOT Guidance Document on Development Along Controlled Access Roads includes an illustration that mimics what we are proposing. It depicts a commercial node which is accessed via a single right-in, right-out intersection. Michigan left turnarounds, which are also known as a super street, are provided on either side of the single access point. From the standpoint of highway access, this property is uniquely situated. If it were any closer, potential access points would be encumbered by the bypass, which is controlled access along its entire length. Properties with frontage on the bypass are, will be cut off. So we've basically got a driveway built right to our property, allowed by this. And again, I can go into more detail in any of these slides you've got, speaking to the access, the fact that it is on a major thoroughfare and not a major intersection, and the, what we feel to be the appropriateness of this zone for this property.
Please take a seat, and if we have questions, we'll call you back up.
Thank you. Mr. Rayhill, did you have anything further to add?
In simple terms, for me, the on and off ramps empty onto the property. The land use plan was done when the Seventeen Bypass didn't exist. The fact that that road now exists, it changes that future land use, I believe, and when they do the next one, I believe they will change it. The highway is limited access, so if you want a commercial development on it, that's pretty much where it's going to be. That's where the on and off ramp are. And at some point, I think if someone did another study with that bypass included, that they would recommend this zone, that staff would recommend this zone. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rayhill. The next individual signed up to speak is Lauren Rayhill, fifty-seven oh one, West Lake Boulevard Road, Windmere.
Lauren's my partner on that. I'll just sign her in case you want to get up.
Since there are no other individuals signed up for this public hearing, I'll open this up to the public. If there's any member of the audience that did not have an opportunity to sign up to speak regarding rezoning case L R E Z two thousand sixteen dash forty-three, please come to the podium at this time, state your name. Once again, if anyone wishes to speak during this public hearing regarding this case, please come forward at this time. With everyone who's signed up that desires to speak having spoken, and no one else coming forward, the public hearing is hereby closed. This item is now available for commissioner questions, discussion to staff, or members of the public, or the applicant, and possible decision. Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Board's pleasure.
I just got a question to begin.
Let me ask if we, can we get a motion on the floor first?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second, so we can ask some questions, bring them back up.
Ben, did anyone come to the planning board meeting that was concerned about this? Some of the citizens there that were notified of the change?
No, sir, we haven't had any, any concerns at the meeting or leading up to this meeting.
Any further questions?
Chair, I have one, and Ben, yes, I wanted to address, you know, and noticing that the staff recommendation is denial of the proposed rezoning, but then the planning board's recommendation, unanimous approval, and with the said recipient here requesting, the land use was different at that time. So what I'm wondering, I know policies do change over time, because zonings change after a while depending on the needs of a community, and I certainly get that, and I certainly understand the needs for the growing services and what we have to offer in Onslow County, but, and I'm certainly not an engineer by any stretch of the imagination. However, I'd like to know if you can just assist me in the process, based on what the engineer stated, and based on the staff recommendations, why the staff, and I can't read here as well, but if you would elaborate a little bit more on that, I would love for you to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's a great question, and thank you for the opportunity. The land use plan was created, as I mentioned in my presentation, and is also stated by the applicant. The land use plan was created several years prior to the initiation of the bypass, and so at the time the land use, future land use maps were created, the bypass was not a consideration at that time. So it was not a driving force for any of the future land uses that were recommended as part of the plan. One thing that certainly gave staff some pause or some concern was the potential impact for established residential and other uses in the area. The RA zoning district itself currently allows a number of non-residential type uses that are more, I would say, more friendly or less impactful to existing and established residential areas, kind of like a community business, whereas a highway business allows basically all commercial uses within the county. In a situation like this where we have some uncertainties, certainly this is one area that we'll go back and look at changes to the land use plan, similar to what we're doing to twenty-four, two fifty-eight, because with the release of sewer along that corridor, then we have to go back and re-study to see what potential land use changes would occur there as well. In a situation like this where we really don't know what the impacts might be, we would certainly prefer something like a conditional zoning, especially for highway business, so that we know that there are safeguards and buffers and things in place to protect those established residential areas, and looking at accessibility and other types of things as well. And this would be in a straight highway business rezoning, staff didn't have that level of comfort of how it might interface with a new bypass, as well as the potential impacts for existing and established residential neighborhoods. So that was really the basis for our recommendation for denial.
I wanted to ask too, Ben, I'm having a little trouble with this because I believe it's going to negatively impact the residents as far as their ability to get to their properties. Am I reading this wrong, or is there going to be quite a mile or so that they're going to have to go, excuse me, out of their way each time they come and go?
That's, that's really part of the unknowns, Madam Chairman. We know that the on-off ramps from the bypass empty out right at the edge of the property, and I believe this rezoning piece itself has a little over a thousand feet of frontage on US Seventeen, if I'm correct, I don't remember exactly. But that's something that would, you know, have to be evaluated by the Department of Transportation with the issuance of a driveway permit to see what proper spacing and locations might be. But with a straight rezoning, even though we have some limiting factors from not having sewer in the area, it would be dependent upon septic, which would have some, but some limitations on what types of uses could be developed. But over time, it could be developed, and that close proximity to those on-off ramps would be something that the Department of Transportation would have to look at to ensure that it didn't negatively impact the traveling public along the Business Seventeen.
So we haven't had that conversation yet?
No, ma'am, because there's no use proposed. Right now, they're just requesting a straight rezoning, and so at some point going forward, then they would come forward with a development proposal, and at that time, the Department of Transportation would review that proposal.
Okay. Would it be, would it be something that would be more applicable if it were a conditional zoning, a CZ, where we could work with them and try to work out some of the details? Because quite frankly, as it stands right now, I'm of a mind to deny it. So just from the aspect that I feel like there are some of the details that have not been worked out. I recognize that a land use plan that has not been updated to take in such a minor, a major change as this bypass is, is probably, could be tweaked, but still, I don't know that under this HB rezoning request, that enough emphasis has been on the citizens out there and not impassing them as far as a longer drive in and out. So unless I'm mistaken, and you're my planning director, tell me if I'm mistaken, is this not going to be more of an impact for the people in the Belgrade area?
Again, it certainly, certainly has the potential, just because of the nature of uses that are allowed by highway business. Even with the conditional zoning, we could limit the number and types of uses that could potentially be used or occupy the property, but it still wouldn't go for a review by the Department of Transportation or a formal review until the time they came forward with a development proposal. I would agree with one thing the applicant did mention, in that the bypass itself will be a controlled access, meaning very limited opportunities for driveway cuts in and out of US Seventeen, once that occurs, and the typical recommendation from the Department of Transportation- And the typical recommendation from the Department of Transportation is to have commercial development in situations like this where you do have side roads or exits like this, where you can have driveways off of the primary thoroughfare. But there again, being able to assess what the potential impacts are, are something that would be unknown, and there again, that was the primary concern by staff.
Okay. Could I have the applicant, does anyone have further for Mr. Warren? You, Jack, anybody?
The planning board, they voted unanimously to, and I've talked to some of the planning board members about this, the ones I can get up with, and they all totally agreed with the applicant on changing it. Based on the changes in the bypass that happened since the zoning restrictions that we had there years ago, they felt like that the surrounding areas needed to be updated to include the bypass. And if that had have been done prior to this request, then they probably would have been more favorable to them to get their highway business zone approved. So that's what the planning board, I mean, I talked to all of them, and they all really supported it. But I read the staff report also, and I know staff has guidelines that they have to go by by the existing comprehensive plan, and I understand where the planning staff got their interpretation of that. So that was, that was where I was at with it. Madam Chair.
So could I have the applicant representative come back?
I'll address one thing right off the bat. I'm not a public speaker, so you've got to bear with me. I am an engineer, though, so I can help you out.
Talk to me just like we're at parties or someplace.
Certainly. I am outgunned in the, in the public speech department, but I would like to, before you even get into it, speak to the, the access and the Department of Transportation concerns. I can't speak on their behalf, but I can speak on my behalf as the site engineer, assuming he gets the rezoning and hires me to do his site plan or we move forward with it. This one is, it's a very easy one to permit with NC DOT because of it's, it's not right on the highway. If it was, there's no way you could get a driveway permit because it's controlled access. It's separated by the highway by an adequate distance that you've got turn lanes that the DOT is building for the interchange itself, just to direct traffic to Belgrade and Maysville. And then along our frontage, there's adequate distance to put in a, you could put enough turn lane to put a Walmart on that site if it was support one. That's not the intention, wouldn't, wouldn't fit on there. But there's plenty of road frontage along what will be the US 17 business corridor to do roadway improvements and not affect traffic going to and from Belgrade with our traffic backing up in the road. And certainly, what we're doing is not creating a situation where they're having to drive further. I was just pointing out that they're going to have to drive by our site to get to and from Belgrade, just the way the DOT has aligned it. So, anyway, your, your question?
Well, that sort of soothes some of my concerns.
Okay.
If I may, DOT did an overlay of the site and denoted this as highway business on the DOT plan.
Okay.
So that was their intention for the site in the future.
Okay.
Is that right?
I don't recall that document offhand, but no, I don't, not surprised to hear that. It's very similar to a lot of sites. As I drive south to Myrtle Beach or west towards Charlotte on 74 and 17 with similar-sized communities, with similar-sized bypasses, a lot of those at the, at the intersection feature commercial-type uses, and that's just another one of them, but.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion in a second on the floor. What's the board, could I have a vote, all in favor of the motion to approve? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, rezoning case L R E Z 2016-48. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Ben Warren to please come forward and give a staff introduction. And just by way of further explanation, when we reach the public hearing phase, if the applicant or the applicant's agents would come forward, we simply ask that you make a presentation. Any questions of the board will be held for the commissioner discussion and question period following the closure of the public hearing. Director Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Excuse me. The second rezoning case that we have for your consideration this evening is the rezoned property from R 15 residential to highway business. The property owner is Mr. Khalid Carmousse, and the parcel identification number is 771-4 and comprises approximately 0.56 acres. This entire parcel is currently located in the AE flood zone, which means they would have some potential development restrictions and would have to comply with the county's floodplain development ordinance should they develop the property going forward. There are no wetlands that have been identified on the site, however. And currently, there's an Anwassa two-inch water line available from Vicker Street. It doesn't currently access the property. There would have to be a future extension to gain access to that water line, but Anwassa's indicated that is something that is available and feasible. There is no sewer currently available to the site. It is currently served by Septic, and fire service will be provided by Turkey Creek Volunteer Fire Department with an ISO rating of six. And as we look at the schools serving the site, we have Dixon Elementary, Dixon Middle, and Dixon High School, which all three are currently over capacity. We're just taking a zoomed-out look at the property. You can see, looking north along Highway 172 to the area referenced as the point overlooking New River. And I'm more zoomed in zoning vicinity map. And one thing with this map, there are five properties that we have here that are highlighted in yellow, and all five of these properties are currently part of the Sea Haven Marine RV Park. Only the parcel that is in pink hashed is considered for the rezoning itself. So the existing or the other four properties are currently zoned highway business. This would be the last piece of the RV Park. And as you can see here with the aerial view, these properties surrounding the property highlighted in red are the existing RV Park itself. And this is just the entrance to the rezoning site itself. You can see there are structures that are already occupying the site, and another view along the Vicker Street leading to the rezoning site. So the R 15 district is primarily a, let's say, medium-density residential zoning district. It has a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet and a maximum dwelling, or maximum density of two dwelling units per acre. First, the highway business, there again, to accommodate the development of retail, service, and related businesses, primarily abutting major thoroughfares throughout the And looking at the future land use map, and there again, there have been some changes since the, this area was, was studied. The future land use map itself has not changed, but as you recall, a couple of years ago, we did the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan, and at that time, we did a much more parcel-level, detailed study of this area. And as part of the Sneed's Ferry Plan, this area was actually recommended for some transition to more so multifamily residential with some commercial overlooking the Point area here. So as we look at our comprehensive plans, the Sneed's Ferry Plan itself did recommend multifamily and highway business zoning for this particular area, so it is consistent with the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan. And as we look at the reasonless and public interest, as you saw in the zoning vicinity map, the majority of the property in this area is already zoned highway business, and with the marina and several other commercial-type uses in the area, the rezoning request is considered consistent with those types of land uses and existing zoning. And based on that, both staff and the planning board have recommended approval of the rezoning request. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hudson for the public hearing.
Thank you, Director Warren. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on rezoning case L R E Z 2016-48. There are no individuals that have signed up to speak regarding this matter, so I'll make a call to the audience. If any member of the audience is an applicant, at this time, the applicant or the applicant's agent may come forward. Please state your name in relationship to the applicant, sir.
Yes, my name is James Lewis. I'm with Charles Riggs and SS, it's land surveyors. We're representing Mr. Carmousse in this rezoning package, and also for the future special use permit that's being done in this area as well. This lot is actually the, it looks like there's a house in the lot. That lot's actually, that dwelling is actually being used and always has been used when Mr. Carmousse bought the property as the office space for the RV units. He's, when he purchased the property, and even the tax office now has it labeled as commercial, even though it says it's R 7, or R 15 as well. The, as I said, the current use right now, the, we're moving forward with a special use permit, but before we can move forward with that, this, this property is included with the other four properties, which would be the overall project. But in order to move forward with a special use permit, this would need to be rezoned along with the, you know, to match the other properties as the original intent. This property was also rezoned, or it was actually zoned, R 15, as Mr. Carmousse had already purchased the property. I mean, he purchased it before it was rezoned. It was being, it was being used as the office space for the RV units. Went Onslow County rezoned this, or zoned this area. This didn't have a zoning at the time, so it's kind of a, we're hoping to kind of clean up because that was the original use of the property to begin with and everything. And as, as the planning board mentioned, they, you know, part of this Sneed's Ferry Plan was to have this as commercial in the future as well, so we're hoping just to kind of clean it up, move everything forward, and in the future, if, if it does move from a different use of what Mr. Carmousse would like to use it for and has been using it for, it'll already be rezoned for that.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll move on to non-applicants that wish to speak regarding this. Other members of the audience that did not have an opportunity to stand up and speak, or rather, sign up regarding L R E Z 2016-48 may come forward at this time. With no other individuals that have signed up and no one else that's coming forward, the public hearing is hereby closed. Madam Chair, commissioners, this item is now available for discussion and questions to the staff and the public and possible action.
Can I get a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here in none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item six, general items. A, Resolution 16-7, to expand the Board of Commissioners from five to seven members with staggered terms. At this time, I will read the resolution. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Resolution 16-7. Resolution to expand the Board of Onslow County Commissioners from five to seven members with staggered terms. Whereas the Onslow County Board of Commissioners is currently composed of five members elected at large every four years under concurrent terms, and whereas between 2005 and 2015, Onslow County's population grew by 15.97 percent, and whereas Onslow County's 2016 total population was projected at 195,835 by the North Carolina Office of State Planning, and whereas the North Carolina Department of Commerce projects Onslow's 2019 population at 222,057 persons with an annual projected growth rate of 2.5 percent. And whereas Onslow's diverse population is spread over a geographical area spanning 767 square miles with multiple population centers, and whereas Onslow County's 2016 budget exceeds $209 million. And whereas 88 of the 100 counties in North Carolina are served by boards organized under staggered terms, and whereas 38 of the 100 counties in North Carolina are served by boards with more than five commissioners, and whereas Onslow County's commissioners deal with a wide variety of complex issues and must interact daily with United States military officials, and whereas expanding the board from five to seven seats would enhance representation for the growing population of the county, and whereas best business practices dictate that moving from concurrent terms to staggered terms would provide a continuity of corporate knowledge that is necessary in an enterprise with over 1,200 employees and a $209 million budget. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of each county in the state of North Carolina is authorized to initiate alterations to its structure by adopting a resolution and implementing the procedures of North Carolina General Statute, Section 153A-660, which, among other things, requires a referendum on the question of the adoption of the operations, and whereas the Onslow County Board of Commissioners desire to enhance the representation of the citizens of Onslow County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners that a referendum be called on the adoption of the alteration to the structure of the Onslow County Board of Commissioners pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 153A-60, and the issue be placed on the ballot at the general election to be held on November 8, 2016 as follows. And now I will read the ballot language as it appears on the resolution. Quote, "Shall the structure of the Board of Commissioners be altered to increase the number of commissioners from five commissioners with concurrent terms to seven with staggered terms by electing two county commissioner candidates in the general elections of 2018 to four-year terms, and electing four commissioners who receive the highest number of votes in the general election of 2020 to four-year terms, and the candidate who receives the fifth highest number of votes in the general election of 2020 to a two-year term?" Question mark. Thereafter, all county commissioners would be elected to serve four-year terms, yes or no. Possibly adopted this the blank day of blank 2016. And that ends the proposed Resolution 16-007, commissioners.
Okay. Motion?
Senator.
Second.
Back up.
Open for discussion. Okay.
I have no problem probably with this, but I was asked here at a meeting about four meetings ago to leave this up to the next board. And at that time, that's what we said we were going to, so I won't be voting for it because I'm leaving it to the next board.
Thank you. Mr. Jarman, any other comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm gonna give a few comments, and probably this should really be done at commissioner conference, but I'm gonna share some of this in reference to this, and that's from the perspective, I've heard so many varying opinions from this county, yea, nay, nay, yea, yea, yea. I'm very confused as a commissioner, and probably some people already probably feel that way about me, but that's okay as well, I'm editorializing. However, I, it's just confusing as a commissioner when at some time in the process you hear, yes, we want this, and I agree with you, Commissioner Jarman, the comments that were made by the public expressed in ways that were sometimes very disrespectful to this board, which never should have happened, because I don't think any of us deserve to be disrespected. We're human beings as we sit here. But I have looked through, and I've done some research on numbers, and looked at the 100 counties, looked at the population versus Onslow County. And because of the research is the only reason that I am voting for this right now, because I will not be here after November, trust and believe. But the only reason that I am voting for this is only due to the fact of the numbers and my research and the number of counties that are within North Carolina that have populations less than Onslow County, have seven that serve. populations less than Onslow County, have seven that serve, and those that have over the 200,000 mark that have seven. For that reason and that reason alone, please be clear, Onslow County is the only reason that I am voting for this.
Any further comments?
Madam Chair, I initiated or tried to initiate this in 2012, and of course it failed, but I always had people approaching me and saying, we need seven members, we need to elect seven members, we need staggered terms. I agree with that. There was even some mention about having wards and districts, and I think that could be down the road. But I would never stand in the way of the citizens voting for this in November, up or down. I'll be satisfied with it, up or down, come November, when they vote for it, if it goes to the ballot. So by allowing the people to have some say in our government, that's why I support it. And that's the reason I would vote yes to move forward with it tonight. Thank you.
Anything further? Then I'll have my say. There were quite a few comments when this was tried to be presented before, and quite clear that those people that came to speak were not wanting this board to address this primarily because of my position on the ballot and Mr. Jarman's position on the ballot, which was six and seventh. So, um, I did, I have worked on trying to get a change over the years, and I primarily wanted districting. I saw this county for years where all the representation came from Jacksonville, and I've seen it when the representation has been primarily out of Jacksonville. And I think the people up here have done a marvelous job trying to represent all aspects of the county. But quite truthfully, I'm not going to support this because it does not have districting in it anywhere. And that's the whole purpose, is to make sure that representation is spread equally throughout the county. Secondary, I was told I should leave this alone. So at this time, I will ask for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Nay. Passes three to two. Thank you.
Item six, B, Resolution to Support Closure of a Portion of Harbor Point Road. Planning Director, Mr. Ben Warren, will be available to present this item and answer questions of the board. Director Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. The Department of Transportation was recently petitioned by several of the property owners that own property adjacent to Harbor Point Road or State Road 1529. A portion of Harbor Point Road, and the portion that you have that's highlighted in the red here is the portion, the portion that's been requested for abandonment. But basically, from that point north, that portion is currently maintained by the Department of Transportation. From that point south, it is maintained by the adjacent property owners. Those adjacent property owners have also purchased properties adjacent to the area that's identified in red, and they asked the Department of Transportation to abandon that section of, as well, for them to maintain. In accordance with the Department of Transportation's procedures, they have requested a resolution of support from Onslow County Government before they move forward with consideration of the requested abandonment. And so before you this evening, you do have a resolution for your consideration in support of DOT's abandonment of this section of Harbor Point Road. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Ben, do we have any residents that are going to be directly affected by these?
No, ma'am. The portion that's being requested from there all the way south is currently maintained by the adjacent property owners. All those that would take access, basically all those properties south of the section that's requested for abandonment is occupied by, let me see if we can get it, by an existing RV park for the main, or main park.
Okay.
So one of the reasons for the abandonment, they've picked up some additional properties, and they want to be able to put up a gated access to restrict the traveling public from entering into the RV park.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Warren? Can I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you.
Item C, Southeastern Incident Management Team Mutual Aid Agreement. Like Emergency Services Director Norman Bryson to come forward to present this item, please. Director Bryson?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. Instant management teams are resources designed to manage the response to local, regional emergencies, natural disasters, and public events. An incident management team is made up of 24 positions designed to assist an incident commander in areas of planning, logistics, finance, admin, and operational control. For example, in 2011, a large warehouse fire, a large warehouse caught fire in Duplin County. Twenty-two hours after the start of the fire, the county responding agencies were exhausted, still trying to contain the fire, and were fighting to maintain control of the scene. At that point, Duplin County called for assistance from surrounding counties for both fire response, equipment and personnel, and for incident management personnel. Over 400 responders from 80 different agencies across eight counties came to aid Duplin County. To help fight the fire, because of the number of personnel, the incident commander needed assistance with logistical control, planning development, situational awareness, and operational management. Local incidents like the warehouse fire, tornadoes, searches for missing persons, and wildland fires can develop without notice and quickly overwhelm county resources. After years of dealing with these situations on a county-by-county basis, 13 different county emergency managers in southeastern North Carolina began working to jointly develop an incident management team. Those counties include Bladen, Brunswick, Carteret, Cumberland, Duplin, Hoak, Jones, Lenore, New Hanover, Onslow, Pamlico, Pender, and Sampson Counties. These emergency managers have designated the team as the southeastern incident management team. The southeastern incident management team mutual aid agreement will allow the 13 counties to enter into agreements to provide additional resources and staffing, which will aid the requesting agencies with incident management during periods where no North Carolina state of emergency has been declared. And the North Carolina statewide mutual aid agreement is there in applicable. Commissioners, we respectfully request the Board of Commissioners consider approving the southeastern incident management team mutual aid agreement and authorize the county manager to sign the document on behalf of the county.
Second. Any questions for Norm? Motion to approve the mutual aid agreement? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, Energy Programs Outreach Plan, Low-Income Energy Assistance Program. Ms. Heidi Bauer, our Social Services Director, will present this item and answer questions. Director Bauer?
Thank you. Each year, the Department of Social Services is required to have a energy program outreach plan approved by the Board of Commissioners as the Consolidated Human Services Board. The plan allows the department to provide energy assistance through the Crisis Intervention Program and the Low-Income Energy Assistance Program to eligible system, citizens. These programs are run with federal dollars. There are no county dollars involved in these programs, and I respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the energy outreach plan and allow the Commissioner, the Chairman, to sign the necessary paperwork.
And second.
Second.
All in favor of the community outreach plan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item E, Final Offer on Real Property. Ms. Laura Jones, our Purchasing Director, will present this item, which is regarding a .11 acres property that was surplus. Director Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. On June 20th, the Board accepted an offer from a citizen to purchase parcel number 036346, which is located in North Topsail Beach, and the offer was in the amount of $5,000, which is the current tax value. As required by statute, a public notice was advertised on Daily News, which allows other citizens to make an upset offer within a 10-day period, and we did not receive any upset offers at that time. Therefore, the final offer of 5,000 is brought back to you for final consideration, and if the Board approves the offer, a warranty deed will be prepared, and it will be removed from the county assets, and the property will be sold as is. It is respectfully requested that the Board consider the offer in the amount of 5,000.
Do I have a motion? Second. Okay. All in favor of accepting the 5,000 offer, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Laura.
Item F, Metaview Landfill Facility Expansion Engineering and Construction Management. Solid Waste Director Scott Bost is here to present this item. Director Bost?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Mr. Manager, Commissioners. The purpose of this task orders to provide engineering and professional services associated with construction of a Phase Four of the landfill expansion. City and Smith will perform all onsite construction management services and prepare the final construction documents for a final permit to operate approval from the state. And as usual, all funds will come from the solid waste fund.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Scott.
I went out and looked at the site where they started working on, they're doing some work out there. Anybody hadn't been out and looked, ought to go look.
Well, Scott always knows that he needs to tell us that it's all coming out of enterprise funds. Continue, Mr. Manager.
Item seven, Appointments. A, Community Child Protection Child Fatality Prevention Team. This evening before the Board are appointments to this team. The following have submitted citizen participation applications to fill categorical positions on the CCPT/CCFT. Applicant Charles Parrish, Law Enforcement Category, one-year term, which would expire June 30, 17. John Reed, Firefighter, one-year term expiring June 30, 2017. Aunt G. Robles, Other Category, term one-year, June 30, 2017. Julia Parrish, Other Category, one-year term, June 30, 2017. Roy Carter, Other Category, one-year term, June 30, 2017. And Lisa F. Oldano, Other Category, one-year term, June 30, 2017. The specific action requested is to request appointment of the listed individuals in their respective categories for one-year terms expiring June 30, 2017, and to approve a waiver of residency, Base Family Advocacy Program Manager who resides in Jones County.
Send it.
And second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
B, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The following individuals are currently serving on the JCPC and have terms that have expired. These individuals have expressed an interest in appointment and have provided citizen participation applications. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. Member Brendan Gartner, Superintendent's Designee, and all of these have, by the way, an expiration date of June 30, 2018. Lynnwood Benfoy, Sheriff's Office, Tracy Arrington, Chief Court Counselor, Heidi Bauer, Social Services Director, Karen Reeves, Behavioral Healthcare Services, Nikoya Dobson, District Attorney's Office, W. M. Cameron III, District Court Judge, Sherry Slater, County Manager's Office, Sean Potvin, Commissioner's Appointee, Kathleen Holbrook, Commissioner's Appointee, Samantha Turnley, Commissioner's Appointee, Vasco Sutton, Commissioner's Appointee, Joseph Jones, Commissioner's Appointee, Reverend Joel Churchwell, Faith Community, Kelly Knapp, Substance Abuse Professional, Angela Lee, Health Director, Rick Perry, Parks and Recreation. The specific action requested is consider reappointing the listed individuals to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council in their respective categories for two-year terms to expire June 30, 2018.
Send it.
And second. All in favor of the aforementioned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
C, Onslow County Board of Adjustment. Currently, there are two vacant seats in the at-large alternate category. Ms. Marilyn Bunce and Ms. Christina Asbury have expressed an interest in appointment and have submitted applications. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The specific action requested is consider the appointment of Ms. Marilyn Bunce and Ms. Christina Asbury, at-large alternate category for a remaining three-year term expiring January 31, 2018.
This is Board's pleasure.
Move to appoint Ms. Marilyn Bunce and Ms. Asbury.
A second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
D, Onslow County Planning Board. Mr. Dale E. Weston, Environmental Representative, and Ms. Mickey W. White, White Oak Township Category's terms will expire July 31, 2016. They have both expressed an interest in serving in their respective categories and provided applications. The specific action requested is consider the reappointment of Mr. Dale E. Weston, Environmental Representative, and Ms. Mickey W. White, White Oak Township Category, for a three-year term expiring July 31, 2019.
Want you to.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Item E was removed from the agenda, Madam Chair.
Yes. Item E, we have nothing pulled from the consent agenda, so item nine would be public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for the five-minute public comment?
We do, Madam Chair. This is the second public comment period. During this second public comment period, there will be a five-minute time limit. In accordance with the Board's Rules of Procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period at the end of the agenda. At this time, I'll begin calling the names in the order in which they've been signed up. The first name is Mr. Bob Williams of 929 Commerce Drive, North Jacksonville. Mr. Williams, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. I'm going to speak briefly on item four that is on today's agenda, the NC Youth Connected Project. The people watching at home, and some people in the audience, may be wondering why that was even on the agenda and what happened. It was a presentation, there were no comments from the Commissioners, and nothing else. As a member of the Board of Education, I have been fielding comments for the last several months with regards to this project. However, the community seems to be disjointed. It's disjointed in a couple of different ways. We have some factions in the community that believe that we shouldn't be pushing forward with the Shift NC. We have other people in the community and in government agencies that believe that we should have. And the one thing that we probably all need to do is sit down and have a conversation with regards to what it's all about. Teen pregnancy, not only in Onslow County, but all over the United States, is a major problem. However, the way it's framed and the way it's brought out within these meetings, the meetings before the Board of Education, et cetera, need to be highlighted with regards to what we're trying to do in the community, what the community is trying to do for itself. Teen pregnancy, ages 15 to 19, is a large problem, but it may not be as large as what some people think. The study that you heard today basically referenced on Slide 7, that approximately 26% of the people somewhat agree, and 25% somewhat disagree or disagree. Now, that leaves us wondering, if they don't know whether we have a problem, then how can you go ahead and have 95, or 89, or 87% people saying that we should do this or we should do that? That's causing confusion in my mind. I'm sure it's causing confusion in the minds of people at home. If we're going to go forward with the programs, we need good solid evidence, but we also need to adjust to what we're doing. And the public needs to understand that we've been dealing with this problem for some time in various ways. There's other agencies that have been handling it within the county, and also some of the public-private partnerships that we have out there. So it is a problem that we're dealing with. But how big of a problem? The general public obviously doesn't understand it. And if the general public doesn't understand it, they're going to question what we're doing. In 2014, Healthy Youth of Onslow was created. It was a group of individuals that got together, individuals from government offices, some of them from private corporations or private nonprofit agencies, and they got together to talk about teen pregnancy in Onslow County because it's coming to issue. In 2012, it first became an issue here during the Community Health Assessment Report that Onslow County did. During that process, there was about 207 people, I think, interviewed, about the majority of them were in the city of Jacksonville. Out of that, about 34.3% of the people said that they didn't believe it was a problem. If, if no one believes it's a problem, we're not going to be able to address it. So we've got to first of all admit or address the issue if we have a problem or not. There's also considerable angst over the numbers that have been provided with regards to putting this program on. Shift NC has come forward with some numbers, and from a strict standpoint, when I first saw the numbers, I said, well, those numbers don't seem accurate because we're talking about 300 and some people in 2014, ages 15 to 19 that became pregnant, but 170 of them were married couples. So the honest question that I first had is what are we doing messing in married people's lives? Why are we doing that? But you have to... But you have to look at it from the overall standpoint, that Onslow County deals with married folk, ages 18 and 19, that have problems. Some of those end up in peer, some end up in the court system, some end up as abused children. There's a lot of different problems that we can have in the community with regards to ages 15 to 19. The 15 to 17-year-olds, what generally would consider in the population of school, are much lower number. We only had 41 cases in ages 15 to 17, and five of those were married folks, so I suspect that they weren't in there, in the school system itself. So as we go through this process, I think it's time for the community to sit down and have an honest discussion. We need to determine, and we need to be able to have input from everyone in the community, not just a few folks. We need to bring in the folks that have pros and cons to this program and see if we can get a resolution on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next individual signed up to speak is David Stahl of 232 Everett Drive, Steeds Ferry. Mr. Stahl, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, County Commissioners, and all residents of Onslow County. Tonight, I rise in solidarity with Onslow Protect Our Students, and as a trusted friend of parents, grandparents, and our kids in Onslow County. I speak for 16 years as an educator, but most important, I speak as a man called by God to speak against unrighteousness. My only purpose tonight is to expose the lies, deception, and manipulation of Shift North Carolina, or named North Carolina Youth Connected in Onslow County, and to warn the good folks of Onslow County to Shift North Carolina is really an ungodly agenda. Who does not want a reduced teen pregnancy rate in our kids? But that is not what Shift North Carolina is all about. We do not need an ungodly and immoral organization from another county teaching our kids heinous morals and values. Teaching morality and even healthy sex practices is the responsibility of the parents and grandparents before God. In the Daily News, front page, 16 July, we read Shift North Carolina Will Present Sex Ed Survey. Really? The article says that Shift North Carolina interviewed 401 people by phone in March and April. But I bet Shift North Carolina did not ask the good folks of Onslow County if they wanted Shift North Carolina to indoctrinate our kids into the LGBTQ agenda. I bet Shift North Carolina did not ask our folks if they wanted Shift North Carolina to educate our young children on how to self-pleasure themselves, others, especially those of the opposite sex. This is what Shift, this is what Shift North Carolina believes, and more. And all you have to do is go to their website and their Facebook page. Okay, so here's the numbers. Let's take the 120,000 number that was presented today, 18 to 16, five, 18 to 65-year-old. If you multiply that by .0 or .401, that is four tenths, less than four tenths of 1% of the good folks in Onslow County were asked questions on which to make life-ordering changes in Onslow County. This is not a credible random survey, and is laughable at best. They say figures lie, and liars figures. Well, to be honest, I would not be too surprised to find out that Shift North Carolina did not really do a survey. Who verified this survey, who verified the survey after all? After all, they lied about teen pregnancies in Gaston County, and now we expected, were expected to believe them. No, my friends, Shift, Shift North Carolina is a Trojan horse, a wolf in sheep's clothing, touting pregnancy rates and big money to get in the door. But in reality, their evil and ungodly agenda is to sexualize our, our kids without consequences according to the Kenzie Report published in 1953, which was the basis for the 1960s sexual revolution, and to significantly and deceitfully push the LGBTQ agenda on our grade, middle, and high school kids. Let me be perfectly clear here. This is not about comprehensive sex education. It is all about the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, Q agenda. Again, all you have to do is go to their website. The Bible says, "That of your mouth speaks your heart," and this is true. Shift North Carolina wants to wrap their evil tentacles around the minds and hearts of our school kids, and our kids in the Boys and Girls Clubs, our kids in peers, our kids in any organization that is funded by the United Way, and so much more. They say follow the money. Well, most of Shift North Carolina's money come from our tax dollars through, through Department of Health and Human Services, and even Planned Parenthood, the world's greatest providers of abortion. Can you see a pattern developing here? And, and ask why Shift North Carolina is one of the strongest voices in the state of North Carolina against HB2? I wonder why. I have done what God has asked me to do tonight, share the truth with you about Shift North Carolina. My heart and hands are clean before God, but it is now time for you to make a choice. Do we want Shift North Carolina in our community destroying the lives of our children? Or do we want to tell Shift North Carolina to take their 30 pieces of silver and go back to Durham? Our kids in Onslow County are our most precious resource. But I'm asking the Board, do you believe that? Parents, grandparents, Christian leaders, I implore you, no, I beg you, stand up and speak out before it is too late. Thank you, and may God bless Onslow County, and may America, may America bless God.
Thank you.
Next individual.
I'm sorry, but we ask you not to applaud and hold your out first, because everyone deserves the same opportunity regardless of their opinions. Thank you. Mr. Hudson.
The next individual signed up is Mr. Craig Wagner of 202 King Richard Court, Jacksonville. Mr. Wagner, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak before you today, and thank you for hearing the spirited discussion on such an important topic, one which we all agree needs action to spur a faster decline in the teen pregnancy rate. As a born and raised native of Onslow County and the son of an educator, I understand Onslow County values. Those values are not much different than what this project is proposing in order to empower youth to make better decisions. Shift is not a curriculum, they are not a program. They do not teach bestiality, or self-pleasure, or other perverse topics, as some may have you led to believe. They are a statewide nonprofit agency that offers technical support and resources to communities who have a need. They do not provide direct services. Now, what our community needs may be different than what other community needs, and they get that. Their services are not meant to be force-fed down our throats, but rather represent the local coalition that has worked for almost three years to better understand the need objectively, and to seek funding opportunities to bring dollars into our community. I know this to be true, because I've been at the table since just before it began, and as of July 1st, I became the Board Chair and Interim CEO for Shift NC. I can assure you that organizationally, Shift cannot bring something into the community that the community does not want. And while we hear from a vocal minority, the third-party objective survey result clearly says that the greater community is hungry for more, and I referenced the presentation you heard earlier today. We can all agree, we have the need here. What we can agree on is how to address that need, which is very unfortunate. There's also this air of fear-mongering or vitriol across our country that's dripping into our community, that I feel is skewing our perspective on a common sense solution. We need evidence-based programming that works, not programming that shame and guilt youth because they simply don't work. I understand this work is bold, and the topic is uncomfortable, I really understand that. But when, on average, 16s become pregnant a week, at what point do we say something has to be done? We agree, these conversations shouldn't happen at schools or health departments. They should happen at home with parents. But what about the youth who don't have that support structure? What about the youth who don't have that system to ask questions? Don't they deserve the right information as well? I appreciate hearing from so many parents and applaud their efforts in being able to have these crucial conversations with their children at home, where it belongs, but some parents just don't feel comfortable and need that help. Ultimately, if you don't want your child participating, you can also simply opt out. But I implore others to seek first to understand, then to be understood. Let's have a conversation before we accept something presented at face value. And let's have some trust in the local partners who've been working tirelessly on this initiative, because we too want what's best for our youth. This should be something that we all agree on. I just ask that we consider the well-being of others, perhaps not our own, are at stake, and we have the ability to provide much-needed help so that all youth grow up healthy. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Joseph Kapper of 147 Cantino Farms Lane, Jacksonville. Mr. Kapper, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Hudson. My name is Joseph Kapper, I'm a retired Navy Captain. My employment is Director of Missions of the 15,000-member New River Baptist Association. This evening, however, I represent a grassroots civic action group made up of a growing list of over 700 civic-minded citizens recently organized in Onslow County known as Onslow Protect Our Students, many of whom are here this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the initiatives which lie behind the survey results you have heard this evening presented by Mr. Clark that were commissioned by Shift NC. Our mission at Onslow Protect Our Students is to inform the public and advocate for health education that promotes abstinence-based sexual education, reduces teen pregnancy, and decreases sexually transmitted diseases in Onslow County. Because this is our mission, practically, practically all of us could fully agree with most of what we saw on the surface of the questions of this survey. Our goal, however, is to ensure that Onslow County remains free of comprehensive sexuality education. And this is why we want to be certain that you, as County Commissioners, as well as the citizens of Onslow County, realize just how deceptive this survey is. The purveyors of this survey, Shift NC or NC Youth Connected, have brought their multi-millions of Federal Department of Health and Human Services grant money to our county ostensibly to reduce teen pregnancy. On the surface, this is exactly what they want you to see in this survey. What you and our citizens need to know, however, is that Shift NC is doing in Onslow County, is buying their way into our souls to undermine the traditional, family-oriented moral fabric that has made Onslow County the great community it has been growing into since 1734. Shift NC has a hidden agenda. Their primary purpose is not to reduce teen pregnancy. We would like all to see, all of us to see reduced pregnancies. But Shift NC's methods are not the way to accomplish this goal. They, their survey touts effectiveness. But do you realize that after five years of their programs in Gaston County, the pregnancy rate for high-school-age teens, 15 to 17-year-olds, was two percentage points higher than our rates for the same year, doing things the way we had been doing them? Shift NC's primary purpose is to promote comprehensive sexuality education. CSE is the modern-day sexual liberation movement. It begins with the Kenzie Reports in the 40s and 50s, ran amok in the free-love movement in the 60s and 70s, evolved into the sexual radicals of 1980s, and when HIV and AIDS became rampant in the 1990s, it morphed into a full campaign to blanket our nation with condoms. Comprehensive sexuality education assumes, and in fact endorses, experimental sexual activity, homosexuality, other sexual behavioral, behavior, promotes sensual pleasure and high-risk sexual behavior, and encourages acceptable, promotes sensual pleasure, and encourages sexual risk reduction and pregnancy reduction through the use of contraceptions. We've been told not to worry. Onslow County Agencies will never stoop to this level. We will grant, we will accept the grant money, but we will continue to emphasize the abstinence programs and traditional family values. We won't implement comprehensive sexuality programs. Should we be so naive as to believe that Shift will share their millions year after year and not see their true goals accomplished? It's already happening. The Department of Social Services has implemented a sexual education curriculum in our foster care program, Making Proud Choices. This program is not truly about making proud choices. It's about helping young teenagers, in their own words of this program, feel good about themselves and increase their confidence in their ability to negotiate safer sex and to use condoms correctly. The National Abstinence Education Association has identified over 20 comprehensive health education programs that are completely evidence-based and fully inform youth about the details of sexuality education, while also preserving our essential moral values. All we need to do is to find the right programs for Onslow County. We do not need Shift NC or their tainted grant money to do this for us. Onslow Protect Our Students urges you to sever all partnerships with Shift NC and to resolve never to partner with them again. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Chuck Sheldon of 1503 Freedom Way Hubert. Mr. Sheldon, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I'm not going to try to be more eloquent than what we've already had. I am disturbed with the statistical data that was presented earlier this evening, and the fact that it's aimed at the general public in age groups. The issue before us and what we're discussing is about parents and parenting and children. How many single people are experts in this particular area, or have the experience necessary to make decisions for the children of other, of the parents? That's one of my concerns. The other is, when we enter public service, and I've been in public service for several years, 20 years in education, 20 years in military, there's very little left of your own personal family privacy as such, because a lot of it is necessary to, to establish our positions in various areas. I think that it would be necessary, it would be at least respectful, if those in our, our County Board of Education would allow our parents to know what their, what their family marital status is and their family background, as far as children are concerned, that are making the decision for the parents of Onslow County. As a point of clarification here, I have a sister-in-law who was an expert on child rearing. She corrected us all as we raised our children for about 10 years, and then she had a child of her own. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual signed up to speak is Dr. LaSanne of 3415 Planters Lane, Jacksonville. Dr. LaSanne, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the ability to come here and freedom of speech that we enjoy. I kind of struggled with this to come here tonight, because my older kids are on, on their way and, and out on their own right now. But I have two young kids, and they go to a Christian school, so I have some control over of what they do take in, do learn. But I struggled, I said, I felt led to be here, to come talk to you, to make a plea to you as with what's going on. I think Shift NC is kind of more like a wolf in sheep's clothing. I don't have an elegant speech, since I'm going to talk, take you up on your, talking at Hardee's in my approach. You know, let's, let's put this in place where we really reveal what's the agenda, what's going on. You know, we, we've all had the chance to have the wool pulled over our eyes a few times. I think we've grown up in that generation from time to time. We've made our mistakes, and we learn from them, and we move on. Is there a need for this survey that came out? I believe so. But also, same time, I've dealt with statistics in the past, and surveys can be twisted, you know, statistics can be turned around any way you want to present them. I think there's some flaws, I think Mr. Clark probably did a great job, probably was paid quite well for some of these surveys, you know, but, because that is a statisticians' job. But however, what I didn't see is, I didn't see based upon families with children. You know, who would behind this family's children would also, would be asked the same question, would you, do you want the school to teach your children something about sexual education? Or do you believe it's more of a family issue? Or find some bland, as, as the gentleman talked about, let's just find some conversation. It seems to be the catchwords these days, let's start a conversation. But what concerns me is how we go about doing this. Do we need education? Yes, we do. We need education, we need that. But there's also ways to, to do that, and good in medical education, said, "Oh, we need some good medical education, and we need some contraceptives." Well, I think there's other ways to doing this. We can use medical textbooks. I grew up with all that, besides, you know, my, you know, background in healthcare. I'm concerned about, I don't know if Shift NC is going to use this book, but as I present this, it's perfectly normal. I hope you will take it upon yourselves to look this up yourself, read this book. It's, I'm appalled by what I see in there. I wouldn't show this to my own kids. It's an embarrassment to me. Even as an adult, I'm, you know, just some of the stuff in here is so graphic, and matter of fact, having small children's atomical parts exposed in frontal nudity. If I got caught with that on my cellphone, I'd probably get arrested, you know, because they're underage, you know? And yet, we send people to prison, make them, you know, sign sexual registers for the rest of their life because of inappropriate pictures we find on the internet. You know, kids these days are going to find out the information they want by just going to internet alone. You know, so I, I think we've got to You know, so I, I think we've got to find a balance. I think we need, there, within that book, it promotes abortion, you know, if it's not convenient, you know? Yes, it talks about contraceptives, it talks about different medicines, it talks about abstinence, it talks about different things. And I implore you to please go look at this book yourself, because if that's part of their agenda, I don't, we don't need that. It talks about self-pleasure. It shows pictures, you know, of a woman and a man, or looks, actually looks like adolescents, you know, doing these sorts of things. It promotes sexual experimentation. Do we really want that? You know, I mean, yes, kids need to know, they need good information. I get that. You know, I grew up at a time when my parents really didn't talk about it. So you sought that out, sometimes you got bad information. So, I'm, I'm 61 years old, you know, I'm in that generation, I know. But I'm concerned about my children, the future. So, as my children going to a Christian school, I have some control of that. But at the same time, I'm concerned about the children in our community. I've been here 30 years, you know, and I want the best for Onslow County, I want the best for our country, I want the best for our state. And we have to draw the line somewhere. Draw the line, stand the line, and stand up and make the right move. And I would hope you, as, as the county commissioners, will look at this. You know, is this, is this being driven by dollars, or is it very being driven by common sense? Because if driven by dollars, because of money and grants and federal funding, and we know how government's raining down on us, the government, our federal government is telling us what to do. And I think it's time to take a stand as our own community, right here in Onslow County, in the state of North Carolina, we need to stand up and say, no, we're going to take control, we're going to write our own agenda, and that way, we're going to promote good, healthy values for the rest of our children's life to carry on to future generations, because they are a generation that's going to lead us on into the future. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
The next person signed up is April Tate of 500 Jarman Street, Jacksonville. Ms. Tate, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Mr. Hudson, do we have several others? If so, we'll ask for a short break. If not, if we're...
Madam Chair, we at least have nine other speakers lined up.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, I'm going to call for a five-minute break at this time. You can come back as soon as we reconvene.
Thank you.
I had not learned the things that I needed to know. I didn't know how to cook. I didn't know how to clean. I didn't know how to sew. And I really didn't know how to take care of a child. I was not prepared for that. I delayed my education for 10 years because I had a child. I was living in Germany and I did not have family or friends support. And so I had to figure things out for myself. That was quite challenging, but somehow I did it. And then six and a half years later, I had my son. And I can tell you that you are a very different parent when you are older than you are when you have a baby at 19. I heard one of the other speakers tonight talk about, we don't want to tell married folks what to do. I wish someone had told me. I was married to someone in the military and I was 19 years old. And I wish to God someone had butted in and told me that you will do much better if you wait. We have to do much better. When I graduated from White Oak, I can recall there were three girls that got pregnant. I can still tell you their names, although I won't say them here today, more than 20 years later. I wonder if the students that are about to graduate from White Oak will be able to recall the long list of names of teenage girls that will become pregnant this year. We have to do better. We owe those girls that and their future. I was very lucky. I have fantastic parents. They were very professional. I was supported. I had the military. I had TRICARE. And I was able to get my education in spite of that. But those girls, the rest of them, they might not have that. And so we have to do better. And I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next individual signed up is Ron Matthews of 305 South Holland Point Drive. Stella, Mr. Matthews, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, I'm Colonel Ron Matthews, United States Marine Corps retired. I appreciate the opportunity to address you as a concerned husband, a father, and a grandfather, not the beneficiary of millions of dollars of federal grants. At 76 years of age, I'm appalled at what has become of our beloved nation. Misguided federal policies that have taken God out of the public square and instituted social welfare and educational programs such as SHIFT are collectively destroying the institution of marriage and with it, the American family. My wife and I have gone on a shift North Carolina connected websites and been revulsed by what we were confronted with. Sadly, SHIFT's project AIM is in our Onslow County 7th grade. And SHIFT recommended program is being considered for the 9th grade. To be fair, to date, the curricula appear to be in accordance with county and state requirements. It is only a matter of time, however, before computer savvy students find other SHIFT websites. What will they find? With regard to gender ID, you get to pick your gender. With regard to contraceptive use, the use of morning after abortifuges and IUDs. With regard to the LGBTQ and God knows where the alphabet will stop, it's acceptable and normal. As we visited these websites, disturbingly absent was any discussion of family, husband, wife, mother, father. These are the very building blocks of a nation. Nationally, 75% of our black children are being raised in single parent families. 33% of whites. And for the first time since statistics have been kept, there's an increase in the Asian American community of single parent families. The consequences are evident in the Chicagos, Baltimore's, and Philadelphias of our nation. Societal chaos. Ironically, numerous studies show that completing high school and beginning children as a husband and wife will significantly increase the probability of not living in poverty. And children raised in traditional families have a far greater chance of success in life. The life lessons that I learned in the 1940s and 50s in a small rural community and in a very small public school were as follows. One, the sacredness of human life. An unborn child was not a product from abortion clinic. Two, sex had a consequence. And with that consequence came responsibilities. Three, the most honorable and important function in society, regardless of your trade or your profession, was that of a husband and wife raising children to become responsible contributing citizens. You won't find these life lessons in SHIFT. And I fervently request that you would advise SHIFT that we do not want nor do we need their program in our county schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Wilma Futral of 183 Huffman Town Road, Richlands. Ms. Futral, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Madam Chairman and fellow commissioners, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Taking this opportunity to say that I know we do not need SHIFT NC in our curriculum at our Onslow County schools. We have had God taken out of everything else. And when the crosses and everything it represents, our Christian faith comes down, then we see the crosses with the teddy bears and all of this stuff in our schools where our children have been killed, where our policemen have been killed. We have to come to a stand where we say, we are going to stand for faith. I agree, we do need to educate our children. And I know that a lot of them will not get that education at home, but the right kind of education. And our children who come from faith built families, when they're told that they cannot speak anything of what their faith values are concerning sexual education, or you're going to be accused of a hate crime, you hate these. We do not teach our children hate. But we do teach our children that some things are unacceptable. And so we have, from what I have seen of the dialogue and the pictures and like some have said, books and stuff that are out there that represent SHIFT, it is embarrassing to grownups, let alone children. And they, what are we going to do when we teach these classes? Are we going to say, have a disclaimer at the end? Do not try this at home? Because when these things are implanted in their young minds, it's going to stick there. They can't get it out. And I will say this, there is a neighboring county where one 12-year-old boy told his little seven, six or seven-year-old cousin, let me show you what I learned in health and PE. And now they have him, they had to go to court a few weeks ago. They had him, said he was going to detention. They did let him go back home. But of course, they're kind of quiet about everything. And so I can't mention much more than that either. But you know how, when you see something on TV and you just want to go try it? And how are we going to tell our children that, you know, this is right teaching at the school, but you're not going to try it out and see what it's really like? So this is a bad program for our children. I have a son that has been married 13 years, has two precious children. In 1983, I had to march down to the junior high school that he was in and sign him out of sexual education class. We have a program already on our curriculum. The major difference in this one is that it is promoting the LGBTQ. And this is not an acceptable standard for a Christian family. And we will not have it poke down the throats of our young children. I have heard that they're wanting to get this into as early as 4th grade. Is there no age of innocence? Are we going to march our children through the sacrificial fires just for the almighty dollar? I say no to SHIFT NC.
Thank you.
Prior to calling the next individual that signed up to speak, once again, this is the second public comment period. During the second public comment period, citizens are encouraged to sign up to speak on any issue upon which the Board of County Commissioners have control. For clarification, the Board of Onslow County Commissioners do not set the educational agenda of the Onslow County Board of Education. The Onslow County Board of Education is a separately elected governing body. It is a separate unit of government. However, Onslow County Government Commissioners do control Onslow County Government Departments. So that is for clarification purposes for anyone that wishes to speak this evening or who might be watching later on as members of the public. The next individual that signed up to speak is Sonya Wolf of 219 Yale Circle, Jacksonville. Ms. Wolf, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening and thank you so much for this opportunity. There's been some very good speakers tonight. And one thing I want to talk about tonight is the intent of SHIFT North Carolina and the impact of what they're going to provide our schools with so our children learn. And I'm going to tell you right now, previous speakers have bought up this book that SHIFT North Carolina has. And it shocked me when I saw it. It shocked me. I'm nearly 70, okay? I'll be 70 this year. We had health education in school. They talked to us about the difference between a boy and a girl. They didn't show the kinds of pictures that are in that book that Dr. LaZan was talking about tonight. And I don't really think we needed that. We didn't have that big of a problem back then, years ago in school. And I don't think we need that kind of information today. I understand by the comment that was just made that the county commissioners do not set the policies for the school board. I understand that very well. But when grants are given, I believe that is a part of the commissioners, okay? So one thing that happens, and I think people need to be aware of here, is that the school systems all fall under Title IX and Sex Discrimination of the Education Amendment of 1972. That covers the school systems. It covers colleges, okay? In this book, it's perfectly normal. I couldn't believe what I read in it. There's a part in there, I give a little background first. I'm a veteran and I taught sexual harassment training for the Department of Defense to civilians and military for 15 years. Sexual harassment is against the law. And that covers in the Title IX and Sex Discrimination in Your Schools, sexual harassment. SHIFT has in their reading material, they cover sexuality. I thought it was really interesting when I got to the back of the book and it says, harassment, sexual harassment is annoying. Annoying? It's against the law. It's not annoying. Sexual harassment is against the law. If we're going to be teaching our children, we better be teaching them properly. We certainly don't want to provide them information that is incorrect. And our schools really need to be aware of this. Second thing I want to talk about too is that this is not being really that well accepted all through the state of North Carolina. Guilford County, they have a big problem with it. They want to know more information. They're not going to accept it. Brunswick County has opted out. Other counties are just going to do the bare necessities that they have to do if they have SHIFT of North Carolina. It's not being accepted because people are very concerned because nobody really knows what kind of information is being given out to our precious children in these schools. North Carolina has a Healthy Youth Act of 2009. This Healthy Youth Act does provide for sex education and training here in our schools. However, it also has an opt-out. Some of these schools and the other counties are doing it a little different. They're doing an opt-in, okay? Today and through the weekend, I just went to different places in Jacksonville. And I talked in hair salons. I went to coffee shops. And I talked to young people that were there and asked them if they were aware of the Healthy Youth Act of North Carolina and SHIFT North Carolina. Do you know that not one, single one of those people, and these are young people, these are people who have children in school, this includes my son, who has a young boy 11 years old. When he saw the book that Dr. LaZan had and that I've also reviewed, he couldn't believe it. He said, Mom, you have got to be kidding me. He went all over Facebook today. People in the hair salon went all, I'm telling you, people really need to understand what's going on here. I'm sure we all care about our children. I hope every one of us love our children. They are our future. We cannot just stand by and let an organization come in, give us facts and figures. Okay, thank you very much.
You could have finished your sentence.
I was going to say, give us facts and figures that we have no way of verifying. Thank you very much.
The next individual that signed up is Dawn Wolf of 219 Yale Circle, Jacksonville. Mr. Wolf, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Thank you so much, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Yes, that was my lovely wife, 70 years old. She's gorgeous. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist here in private practice. Taught college for 20-plus years. One of the classes I taught was a social problems class. And part of what we looked at in there was how to lie with statistics. And it was partially clarified by Mr. Clark in relationship to the sample that was derived from the total population. You have got to derive an adequate proportional representative sample. So if we've got a total population of 10%, teenagers, 20% blacks, 40% whites, 3% two-year-olds, that sample has got to be reflective of that total population. I hope that that was the case. If not, we're already off on the wrong foot. There are ways in which statisticians do distort the truth. I read somewhere that a statistician uses statistics like a drunk uses a lamppost as for support. There are times where statisticians do not have enough participants in their surveys. In a survey at Johns Hopkins University back in 1970, they indicated that one in three coeds married instructors. They were looking to attract more coeds to Johns Hopkins University. They succeeded. The following year, they added 96 coeds, bringing the total of 99. For that to be an adequate statistic, 32 of the incoming, 96 females would have to marry instructors. It didn't work out that way. Plus, you've got to have an adequate base year to determine an increase or a decrease in what you're studying, in this case, allegedly teen pregnancies. If you don't have a normal base year, your statistics can be very alarming. We can take a base year, let's say of 1980, I'm just making this up by the way, and we can say that there were 10% teen pregnancies in Onslow County. We can say in 1971 and '72 that there was 50% increase in teen pregnancies. If we use 1970 as our base year and we say that in 1990, 60%, there's been a 60% increase in teen pregnancies, you can see how alarming that is and really how inadequate it is. I've looked through some of the books that they've got here. It's not just about teen pregnancy. If that's all this was about, I'm all for it. But they get into things that just kids don't need to know. There's a particular picture showing a female with her rear end. And she looks to be a juvenile. I promise you, if you were to get that particular pic on your computer and it was to be found out, you could be tried as a sex offender. I'm telling you that because I deal with sex offenders. I'm ATSA certified. That's part of what I do here in Onslow County. They would not allow such a thing. I secondly have a concern or question about the credentials of the people who will be teaching these classes. They talk about teachers, health officials, and counselors. Are these the people who are really adequately trained to be able to do this? In my field as an illustration, if you go to see a counselor, people think, well, I'm seeing a counselor who's qualified in almost any area. That is not true. If we're not certified in specific areas, we may not be capable of handling certain situations. I do deal with sex offenders. I do have the credentials to be able to do so. I've had people go to other professionals. They've seen them. They thought they were in the right place. They came to me and lo and behold, guess what? They wasted time and money. So I question the credentials of these people. Are they certified sex educators? Do they even know what it takes to be a certified sex educator? If we're taking this away from the parents whose responsibility, I think most of us believe that it continues to be. I don't think that most of us would argue that there has been a decay in the moral fiber of our society. Things have changed and not for the better. What used to be X-rated has become R-rated. What used to be R-rated has become PG-rated. We are a more permissive society. Some things are illegal, some are immoral, some are inappropriate. I think where SHIFT is, is somewhere between inappropriate and immoral. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
The next individual signed up to speak is Kathleen Holbrook of 112 Robin Hood Drive, Jacksonville. Ms. Holbrook, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I am a career social worker and a child advocate, and I have been my entire professional career. It has been my goal to ensure that children are healthy and they're safe, they're protected, they're housed, and that they are free of abuse and neglect. I wanted to speak with you tonight as a board member of Piers Family Development Center, which has been in our community for 39 years and has administered the Adolescent Parenting Program for the last 19 years. This past fiscal year, the Adolescent Parenting Program served 54 youth, teen parents, or pregnant teens. This is a secondary prevention program. It is not a primary prevention program. So the goals are to prevent secondary pregnancies, to ensure that children remain in school, that they are healthy, their children are healthy, and that they receive an education and that they become employed. This is dealing with the problem after the fact. The North Carolina Youth Connected Project would provide primary prevention. It would teach our children how not to become pregnant in the first place and how not to contract sexually transmitted infections. Unfortunately, Onslow County rates number two in the state for the number of teen pregnancies. And it also has a correspondingly high rate of chlamydia, gonorrhea, and HIV. And these are things that we are not proud of and that we would like to prevent from happening in the first place. It is a different society, as Dawn Wolf just stated. Our society has changed quite a bit over the years and children are not learning from their parents the way they once were. They are learning things from television, from social media, and from their friends. And unfortunately, this information is not always accurate. So the goal would be through this program to put health educators in the health department, at Piers, and in the schools to educate our youth. Of course, we want parents to be the ones who are empowered to teach their children about sex, the consequences of unprotected sex, and the dangers that come along with it. But not all parents are prepared or comfortable doing so. The North Carolina Youth Connected Project is front-end prevention. It would prevent youth and teen pregnancy from occurring in the first place. And we've been focusing on the 15 to 19 population tonight. We work with children as young as 11 years old in this community who become pregnant and parent children while they are still children themselves. If we can prevent pregnancies and STIs from occurring on the front end, it will save us money as taxpayers through the associated costs with Medicaid and prevention programs, reliance upon public support systems, and also high school dropouts. So let's change the outcomes for our youth and teens. We have the ability to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Crystal Jefferson of 1010 Foskue Drive, Jacksonville. Ms. Jefferson, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. My name again is Crystal Jefferson and I am a native of Onslow County. I'm a product of Onslow County schools. I am the mother to a 20-year-old who has been through Onslow County schools and a child who is 10 years old who will continue to go through Onslow County schools. I'm a former small business owner. I'm a former Onslow County Schools science teacher. I'm currently a Piers Board Member and I currently work for the Onslow County Partnership for Children. My role at the Partnership for Children is a unique one in that I get to engage with clients to be able to connect them to community resources. What makes this so important to me is my role that I had with Onslow County schools. As a science teacher in the high school, I was able to meet dozens, hundreds, even thousands of children over all of my years in small business and in Onslow County schools. Whenever I left Onslow County Schools three years ago, I had the ability to come to the Partnership for Children where we've taken over the childcare subsidy program. Many of the children that had come through the doors are students that were former students of mine. Many of them have the same sad story. Many of them always say to me, if I had only known that it was going to be like this, if I would only have the resources to be able to find myself in a different circumstance, maybe I could do differently for my children. I'm here tonight to express my support for the North Carolina Youth Connected Initiative in Onslow County. The North Carolina Youth Connected Initiative is an opportunity to bring the entire community together to reduce teen pregnancy. Currently, Onslow County is number one in binge drinking, it's number one in chlamydia, and number two in teen pregnancy. I would rather Onslow County not become number one in teen pregnancy as well. I would rather us work together as a united community to be able to incite change on the front side instead of on the backside. I have read through the initiative and I have come across the LGBTQ wording that everyone is so concerned about. The words, the letters that have been included in this are not necessarily to educate people about what the letters mean. It's about inclusivity in language to be able to support all children regardless of what their sexual preference is. Over the last week, I spent countless hours with a teen mother who is now 25 years old, who has three children and is literally homeless. All she kept saying to me is, if I had only known that my life was going to be like this, if I didn't have the education behind me, I would have made different choices. But no one ever told me what this is going to look like. So tonight, she's sleeping in her car while her children are staying with a friend. I don't want that to happen to other children in this community. I don't want other teen moms to have to have that experience because they were unable to be connected to resources. Making this investment for Onslow County teens is imperative to the future of our community. We know that as pregnancy rates decrease, so will dropout rates. In five years, I hope to see pregnancy rates decline and graduation rates increase. With Onslow County choosing to use the North Carolina Youth Connected Program and have these additional resources within our community, hopefully we can experience this positive change. I hope the Board and the community will choose to support the teen population to empower and educate themselves for a lifelong positive sexual health experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Dawn Rochelle of 224 High Hill Road, Jacksonville. Ms. Rochelle, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Thank you so much. Thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you again for allowing me to address you again. As I have sat here and listened to people's comments, one of the things that I think we all agree on is that we are in support of what we feel is best for children. It's been wonderful that I think everyone agrees that parents are the best first teachers of children. And I stand before you as a person who is a licensed clinical social worker, I'm a trauma-trained therapist, I have a private mental health practice, as well as being the executive director for the Partnership for Children here. But despite letters and education behind my name, I, like everybody else, has to work at this thing called parenting. And one of the things that I have tried to do in my career in Onslow County is I've tried to always keep, as I said when I first spoke this evening, the lens from which I walk from. You see, I'm a child from eastern North Carolina that finished my schooling here with Onslow County as a 1983 graduate of Swansboro High School. And one of the things that was a blessing to me at Swansboro High School, which was a very small high school at that time, is that in 1979, as a freshman in high school, after just losing my father, who was an alcoholic, I'm a product of a home with domestic violence, I'm a product of a home whose family had to seek shelter many times, I stand before you as a child of a family who sought public assistance, had have had DSS involvement in my childhood. And in 1979, there was comprehensive sex education in a high school auditorium in the old Swansboro High School. I had a mother who was distracted at the time, understandably so, having lost her husband at age 34 and not knowing exactly what she was going to do. And I keep that story in front of me because had it not been for the adults that I was surrounded with at that time, not having family members around us, because we drained a lot of family support, quite frankly, given my upbringing, as many of the families that we serve today do. But had I not had that experience, I don't think that I would stand here in front of you today with all of the things that I was taught. I knew that I could go to the Health Department. I knew that there were people there that would care for me and that would look out for me. Because, you see, we didn't have health insurance. I don't even think I had Medicaid at the time. But I knew that if I went to the Public Health Department, I could receive education. That's the piece. You know, with all of the information, technology that is in front of us, it is still through the relationship of caring and trained individuals in front of our children that make the most difference. Now, you see, my husband and I, who is also from Onslow County, went through all of his years in Onslow County, a Dixon graduate. Our daughter is now a junior at NC State, went all of her years through Onslow County Schools. My daughter needed different involvement because, you see, I was able to delay and have a planned pregnancy and delivered our first child at age 30. It could have been a lot different, and it is a lot different. And as a person who actually took the social problems class that Mr. Wolf alluded to, because I was in his class at Coastal Carolina, he's right, data does matter. And I remember his class as he sat there and said that. And as a former adjunct faculty with East Carolina University's Masters of Social Work Program, I will stand here before you as someone who's very much about program development and program implementation, that you absolutely must look for the data. And as the Director for the Partnership for Children, my track record over the past 17 years has been to help children not get to the doors of public service. This is money that is available to us in our community after a long, thought-out process. The Partnership for Children has been known to actually turn away money. We are not standing here as a beneficiary of this grant. We came as a convener because that is our mission in order to leverage resources in the community. Social change is hard. I get it. I've been doing it my whole career when I first started in 1987. And I stand before you with a track record of being able to discern and to bring people together. This is about community resources for something that the county is already charged with providing. In our community, we know what's best, and being able to, and not we as the partnership, but we collectively. So I agree, perhaps there does need to be more conversation, but I will say that this needs to continue so that these programs that we know are already draining our resources can be looked at and there can be additional support given. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Anne Marie Raymond of 100 Wyonstone Place, Jacksonville. Ms. Raymond, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
All right. Thank you very much, and good night almost at this point. I stand here as a graduate of Jacksonville High School, 1993, as well as a parent to two young children in our public school system. That would be my most important role. My second most important role, though, is I work at the Partnership for Children, and I oversee all of our family support programs. I've been at the Partnership now for nearly 12 years. But before I took that role, after I graduated in college, I worked as the Adolescent Parenting Coordinator at Piers Family Development Center. That was very special work. I worked alongside teen parents for five years, and I saw and experienced the challenges that they had. I took them to look for employment, enrolled them back into school, meet with their counselors, take their children from the pediatrician. I worked alongside, and many times, as they cried, I cried with them. Many of them had suicidal thoughts. Many of them felt like the world was coming to an end. And little did I know, because I didn't have children of my own at that point, how hard what I was asking them to do was. So you can only imagine, as in my role, which is primarily working in intervention programs in our agency, when somebody came and knocked on our door at the Partnership, saying, we want to help you. We want to help this teen pregnancy issue that Onslow County has. And we have a model that has been done in another community that at that time was ranked 28th in the state. We're ranked second. We jumped at the chance. Not many times do people knock on our door and offer to help. So when they said, let's replicate this model, we'll help you look for funding, we definitely were overjoyed at this opportunity. I am the co-chair of the Healthy Youth of Onslow. I helped convene the people to the table and didn't ever leave anybody out. This is a very, very important program for our community. This has the ability to make lots of positive changes. And I ask you today to consider that what this project is all about is teen wellness. While, yes, it has a component of teen pregnancy prevention, it also has a component of teen wellness and health. The model is to have health educators at the Health Department, as well as more prevention at Piers, as well as the curriculum and health educator and coordinator in the school system. It's a collective way to make mobilize things in our community. So I appreciate you allowing us to come today, and I do hope that this is a start to lots and lots of conversations past this point. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
The next individual that signed up to speak is Richard Butler of 118 Green Crest Circle, Jacksonville. Mr. Butler, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and other Commissioners. I've spoken just very few times here at a meeting. I've been to quite a few. I've been to just one Board of Education meeting, and that was kind of disastrous for me. It was like sometimes here that you can't say your piece, and you can't ask questions. You have to go along with those that are sitting behind the board or the counter. I'm here as an individual that is against NC shift. I don't know how many of you have looked at the website, but I will tell you, it sickens me. It turns my stomach inside out. Yes, I'm 63 years old. Yes, I learned a lot of things as a teenager from other people. But I also learned at a younger age than that. Because the lady that I married, I told her I was going to marry her when I was 14 years old. I married her when I was 17, and I'm still married to her today. That's 46 years. I am a statistic. Years ago, if you got married at young, it didn't last, or you had to get married. Now I've been married to the same lady for 46 years, and I'm a statistic because I've been married this long. And I want to thank God that I do. But here tonight, there's been a lot of people give a better synopsis of the issue that is before us. But I would just encourage this board personally, and I'm not sure if you've read it or how much you have, I'm tired of people telling me in Congress that we've got to pass it to find out what's in it. That has done nothing but kill our government. We need to opt out of this. So what's going to take place if we don't opt out? An older kid that's one grade older than my grandson gets this and spews it to my grandson? That's going to make me upset. We, as parents, have the right to teach our children. And if we don't do that, then we're failing our responsibilities above all. And I took that step at a young age. I raised my two kids here in Onslow County. I got here by the Marine Corps, but I have stayed. And I have seven grandchildren. They range from 18 down to four months old. So I've got a lot of years invested in this county and a lot more to come. I pray every day for you, and you, and you, and you, and you, and you. Y'all don't even know it. I pray for everybody, everyone back here behind me. Because I believe in a word that says that you are to pray for those that have authority over you. And abide by the law. Give unto Caesar what is Caesar's. But when it goes against God's Word, I'm against it. You'll have to stand me up against a wall or chop my head off. I know some people would like to by some of the things that I've told them face-to-face. I'm not going to tell you anything behind your back or speak to someone about you behind your back. I'm going to come to you if I have a problem with you. And that's why I'm here tonight. I'm encouraging you. I implore you to take this and send it back to where it came from. We do not need this. We can do a different program. This lady that was just up here that had a hard life and had to raise her kids by herself, I've seen it. I've seen young couples come through our church that didn't have any family nowhere And she said she wished she had had someone to help her. Well, that's what I and my wife have done. That's why we have the family that we have that stretches from Florida to Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, Ohio, and Tennessee. We're scattered all over the place.
Mr. Butler, the five minutes expired. It was stuck at 1:50.
Was it stuck at that? Well, I'm sorry, but...
No, I apologize for that technical difficulty.
I'll have to write it down better next time then, won't I?
Not at all, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I do apologize for that. The next individual that signed up to speak is Emily Jefferson of 1010 Foskue Drive, Jacksonville. Ms. Jefferson, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes. And I'll ask the sound room to please check our timer clock, please.
I won't go over, it's fine. Thank you all. So I had no intention of speaking tonight. However, as many other community members insinuated, I've been compelled to speak. I am a 20-year-old rising senior at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. And again, as many others have insinuated, I too believe in choices. In essentially a semester, I'll have chosen to have a degree in sociology. And that degree focuses on mathematics, statistics, the distribution of resources in our communities, and the understanding of privilege. Other community members address their own upbringing, their own sexual education, or the sexual education of their children, but their anecdotes are riddled with privilege. And privilege gives you choices. Not everyone has been privileged in their life, and therefore, they do not have a choice. All Shift NC is doing is offering a choice, an option for those members of the community who may or may not have experienced privilege on a daily basis. I have been blessed with privilege, but not much knowledge about life from the Onslow County school systems. I graduated from Jacksonville High School in 2013, and other than the puberty education I got in the fifth grade, there's not really much education I got in regard to sexual education. But thanks to my family, and thanks to my university, notably one of the best universities in the world, I have every opportunity in the world to put my hands on resources. I have the option. And that's really all we're asking of you all is to give our community a choice and a chance. Comprehensive sex education curriculum in the school system and in the community through Shift NC is simply just an option. And I hope that the choices of the board and the community reflect the desire to offer options to every young adult. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the last individual that signed up to speak during the second public comment period.
Now we can applaud. Now, I want to thank all of you for your participation, and thank you all for adhering to the rules and coming tonight. At this time, it's time for our managers' comments, and then we'll move into board comments. And because of the late hour, I will ask, please be brief.
Madam Chair, just a couple of comments this evening. I'd ask Mr. Howard Martin to please come forward. In the interest of time, while Mr. Martin's walking, I'd like to introduce Mr. Martin, if you could go to the podium. Mr. Martin, to our public and to the Commissioners, Mr. Howard Martin is our new Animal Services Director. He comes to us with a wealth of knowledge in law enforcement community, working with animal services, and we appreciate him coming to Onslow County. He has a lot of experience that he'll bring to bear, and I'm very confident in his abilities. And so, Commissioners, I just want to introduce Mr. Martin to you. Mr. Martin, you're using a bit of my time, and I've been told by my chairman to be brief, so you have 10 seconds.
Thank you very much for the introduction, and I'm very honored and excited to be here and relocating. So in the interest of time, I'm sure I will have another time to address you in full length. But thank you very much, and thank you to the community.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, ma'am, I would like to just make a comment before calling on one other individual. This evening, the Board of Commissioners approved a resolution which would place on the referendum this fall, a process by which, if approved by the voters, the Commissioners would move to a seven-member staggered-term board. There's been comment this evening by members of the public and also by board members regarding districts and the possibility of future districts. As a manager, it's a manager's job to always bring education to bear, to provide options to the board and information to the public. As that moves forward in the future, I would like to make a distinction. There are multiple types of districts. And so this evening, while the cameras are still rolling, at the very inception of this decision-making process by our public, I want to just make one observation. There are differences in residential districts and electoral districts. Residential districts may require that an individual commissioner or candidate live in a particular area, but might be elected at large by the entire community, as opposed to an electoral district, which would have a candidate both residing in a particular area and only being elected by that particular area. So there are pros and cons... So there are pros and cons to both of those, and I would just, for the record, encourage the public and the board at some future time when districting comes up to be very cautious about that. That there is a danger where there are individuals elected only within one particular area that projects and resources may go to that one particular area versus the entire county because of the nature of elections. Who is electing that single elected official? And that is purely academic. It's a matter of discussion and information, and it's not something that would come up for many, many months or years. But at some point in time, the discussion must take place if Onslow County is to consider the issue of districts. As my last comment this evening, I would ask Dr. Megan Doyle to come forward to the podium. I will grant the remainder of the time you allow me, Madam Chair, to her, but as I call Dr. Doyle forward, I would like to thank her publicly for her service. This is Dr. Doyle's last Board of County Commissioners meeting. Dr. Doyle has been the Assistant County Manager of Onslow County, one of our Assistant County Managers, and has played a pivotal role in a large number of decisions over the last several years. She has been chosen by the Craven County Board of Education as the new Superintendent of Schools for Craven County. Dr. Doyle has a wealth of experience, and I believe that one of the reasons that she was chosen to serve Craven County in this new capacity is, quite frankly, commissioners, you all allowed me to hire Dr. Doyle and give her the experience of county government. Because to every person in the sound of my voice now or televised later, one of the key issues facing North Carolina in the future is that appropriate allocation of resources and an understanding that has to occur between county government in North Carolina and county boards of education in North Carolina. And a person that has worked in both places is best suited to bridge that gap and tell county commissioners about boards of education, or conversely, educate boards of education in the complexity of county government. Dr. Doyle.
Mr. Hudson told me to be brief. I unfortunately have prepared a few pages. So to the folks in the audience, I apologize, and I will try to, where I think it's appropriate, skip some things. But I want to make sure that you all understand how much I appreciate each and every one of you. So with that, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Thank you to Mr. Hudson for conceding his manager's comments. Time to me this evening. As Mr. Hudson indicated, my last day will be next Friday with county government. But I wanted to take this opportunity publicly to thank each of you sitting before me. I've worked for four different elected boards in my career to this point, and I've watched the work, commitment, and sacrifice required to sit in your seats as an elected official. And I know how often you do not receive any praise on evenings like this where issues are very, very contentious. I want to take some time to give you my thanks from the position of an employee and a citizen. Each of you sitting before me has taught me countless lessons about grace under fire, strategy, cooperation, and dedication to those that you serve. Local governments are the most effective form of government, both in terms of working on initiatives that directly benefit citizens and actually having the courage to make decisions that positively affect our communities. I have to say that I've seen that in action continuously for the last four years from this board. This community has benefited greatly in the last several years from the leadership of each of you by building consensus through your individual and collective ability to work with and through opposing opinions with one another, and finding and being open to unique solutions to some of the biggest problems in local government. All of this has happened during a very contentious time in our nation's history. It is maybe easier in the short term for elected officials to avoid making decisions because the action required may not be politically popular, but I'm proud to say that this body has not taken that perspective. And for my part, I'm so glad that the important decisions that affect our citizens are made and have been made by each of you. And I'm not going to go through the very long list of accomplishments, but I want to say that a significant amount of progress has been made by this board. We're sitting in a beautiful, brand-new building. We have a consolidated human services building that's coming very soon, a vehicle maintenance facility. You have consolidated human services. You've also reduced the number of core government services employees by 80 in the last nine years, all the while increasing positions in public safety by 178. These decisions have not been easy, and even if the people watching this broadcast don't agree with some or all of those decisions, I hope there is some confidence in the action that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners have taken to confront the challenges of our changing economy and community. The men and women in front of me have acted with servant's heart to do what's right for every citizen in Onslow County, and I thank you. I want to end this by saying thank you for trusting me to do important work to support the employees of Onslow County Government and in my role as Assistant County Manager in serving our citizens. We have a tremendous workforce and one that I would put up against any in the state. We have an equally amazing community characterized by diverse citizens willing to have conversations where most seek to listen to one another and engage in important dialogue, again, like this evening. You already know that we have a tremendous staff, but I want to thank you and Mr. Hudson for putting this team in place. A very wise and distinguished woman, who I very much admire and look up to, recently told me that although a season in a person's life may be coming to an end, instead of focusing on that end of the season in our lives, we should pray thanksgiving for the fact that we had that season at all. So I'm thanking God for each of you and my time with each of you and this executive team, our department heads and our employees. And I hope that what I've learned from Onslow County will serve me and those I work for well in Craven County. I'm sure I'll make that mistake a number of times. Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for allowing me to speak in your place this evening. Thank you for hiring me and allowing me to be a better mother to my daughter and being able to spend the last four years close to her while serving in this position. And finally, for teaching me so much about county government and leadership. Thank you to this board for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Megan.
Madam Chair, thank you.
Person, Ms. Megan Doyle, thank you. Okay, let's have Commissioner comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Wright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be really brief. Welcome aboard, Mr. Martin, with our animal shelter and animal control services. Got your work cut out for you. Got some big projects to work on, and I'm sure you can jump in there and take care of all of our needs and satisfy all our complaints, and everybody will be happy come the next Congratulations, Dr. Doyle, for your service to Onslow County. Hope you have good luck with your new position. I'm sure you'll do well, and you know where we're at if you need anything. And I'd like to say congratulations and thank you. All the speakers that spoke tonight, I think it was very elegant and very well put together from both sides of the coin, and it's a contentious subject, and I'm sure the county will come to some resolve in the school system. Of course, mostly that's what people were talking about tonight is Onslow County school system. So other than that, good night and have a safe trip home.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Mr. Jarman.
Let's see, I don't have a lot to say, except one of the speakers tonight said that we need to have dialogue about this shift in North Carolina. I think there've been a lot more people that's been interested in this thing than the people may think. I have had more people approach me about this one issue than I know, I don't guess of any other issue I've ever had, than many people that oppose to that. And I want to say tonight that I don't, nothing to do with it either.
Okay, thank you.
I got, well, actually, I got nine children, 21 grandchildren, and 24 great-grandchildren. So they're in my heart, and I don't really think this will help them a bit.
Well, you needed this. I said, you're the one that needed it.
I don't, I could tell my children what to do. My wife would tell them what to do.
Thank you, Mr. Jarman.
And tell them about the birds and the bees.
Okay, okay. We've been here so long, we've got, oh yeah, a little giddy. Vice Chair, did you have comments tonight?
I do. I had a poem I was going to read tonight, but I'm going to save it for next meeting. But what I want to say is thank everybody for being here. But one of the things that David Brown, I don't know if any of you kept up with what happened in Dallas, but I want all of you, this community really stands together on everything. I don't care what it's about. We always come together. Our police officers, our law enforcement officers mean the most to me, and Jack, and W.C., and Barbara, and Millionaire. They mean a lot to me. And the poem that I had tonight, I'll read it next meeting, and it says a lot about what David Brown said in his interview after his officers were killed. And now we've got Baton Rouge. It's just one of those things, and I hate to say, it's almost like our officers have targets on their backs. And one other incident that happened, I don't know if the sheriff's aware of it or not, but I'm running a detention officer class right now, and one of the officers stopped to get fuel over on Brenmore. And when he was getting fuel, four black men in a Lincoln Continental, he's black, called him a JPD officer and started cussing at him. And what he did was got in his vehicle and left. That was the best thing he could have done, but why did they do that? So we had to, Major George and myself and some of the staff on the sheriff's side, we took them out of uniform. We don't let them come to class in uniform no more because we don't want to put them in jeopardy because these guys aren't carrying weapons. They're actually detention officers in a uniform, and these guys thought they were JPD officers, and it was not a JPD officer, it was a detention officer. And I really was scared for him. I hate to admit that, but we got to be careful. We all need to look out for our law enforcement officers, guys. We've got the best in Onslow County. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, I jumped over you.
That's quite all right. But I know that I will have to have my comments. Next, County Commissioner. But the only thing that I will say very briefly, Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for sharing your noble comments this evening on both sides. Because sitting here, hearing both sides of a fence, really create enlightenment. I'm going to be brief, I promise. I work with a lot of students that come from very broken homes. And I'm going to get personal for one second. Madam Chair, give me a minute. And that is, I'm also a pastor outside of this role as a county commissioner, my husband and I both. He has his doctorate in theology. I'm back in school with a psychology degree, getting my emphasis in Christian counseling. But when you see teenage pregnancy, even in your own family, for generations, as a pastor, I also get it about God's principles, and you all spoke about that. I also get it that we have no authority when it comes to the school system as far as policies, rules, and regulations. So I'm sitting here, and I'm hearing a lot of information. But I think Dawn Rochelle said it best to me, and you all said it best, but I, something that Dawn said spoke to me. Everyone in Onslow County wants the care, the proper care, for our children. And I think that that's a base of conversation that has to be had. I also attended a protest here because I was asked to speak, do the right thing. And I have to go on record because there was an officer there after it was over, my husband and I attended. It was predominantly black people there. There were several white people in the audience, and they were going to march and walk down to the Freedom Fountain. I said to my husband, you know what? There are some white gentlemen across the street just watching. I would like for us to go over there and thank them. Whether they came there for the right reason or the wrong reason, I, as a county commissioner, needed to step across the line. I, as a human being, needed to step across the line. I, as a pastor, needed to step across the line. We are all human beings. Excuse me, I need your hand one minute. Both these hands. You take a razor to this hand, you take a razor to this hand, we're both going to bleed red blood. It has to stop on both sides of the fence, and we, as a people, have got to do better. You're talking about teenage pregnancy. There are safety issues for our law enforcement here. If a community isn't safe, what do we have? People, we have got to wake up as a local body, as a state body, as a national body. This division in our country here, you're speaking about issues that just went on, it's got to stop. We are all human beings. I never made a conscious decision to come out as an African-American woman out of my mother's womb. I never had that choice. And I don't think you had a conscious decision that when you came out of your mother's womb...
I don't believe in that.
And if somebody in the room did, then let me know. But we've got to do better, people. We've got to do better. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll do the rest next week, next Commissioner meeting.
It's really difficult to follow million with those kind of comments. As a wife of a law enforcement officer for many years, I sympathize with what's going on. I sympathize both in the job that needs to be done and the people who disgrace the uniform. So, yeah, we've got to do better. Other than that, I do thank everyone for coming tonight. We need to, we need to put together a committee to make sure that these voices have a say. And it, no one is 100% accurate on a survey. I've taken surveys, and by the time they get through my age, my income, my education, I'm ready to get them off the phone. And, you know, a lot of times, those surveys are not accurate. So we need to find out what's important for Onslow County citizens, and that be our issue, not what numbers or statistics say, but what's right for our citizens. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.